Good evening. It's 6:30 PM. This is a special meeting of the Holly Township Parks and Recreation Commission, and today's date is May 28, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We first start by giving the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Next, Madam Secretary, please call the roll. Commissioner Carl?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Earl?
Here.
De Sessa?
Present.
And Hutchins? I know that he was here earlier today, but he left for a few minutes. He should be here any minute now. Okay. Let's give him a few more minutes before we call him absent. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to excuse him. Okay. So let's hold off a little bit on that. Okay, thank you, everyone. Next item is the Agenda Changes or Agenda Approval. Before I make a recommendation, are there any items that the Commission would like to add or remove? Okay, hearing none. The only item that I respectfully ask is that we add, and I'm not going to change the order here, but at the end, after public comment, that we also, very briefly, all of us, because I know this is a special meeting, please do a staff and commission report, please, and that would be item number nine. And then adjournment would be item number 10. Can I have a motion, please, to get that done?
Make a motion to add number nine reports underneath public comment.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All the, uh, support, okay. So, Madam Secretary, can I ask to please call roll? Carl?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
De Sessa?
Yes.
Earl? Yes. Majority, motion passes. And the other thing is I'm learning to do this roll. This, the motion was made by Commissioner Wright and second by Commissioner Carl. Okay. Very good. Motion did pass. And it was a 4-0. Okay. Next is item number six, which is, oh, no, item number five, I'm sorry. Let me go back up. Item number five, public comment. This is a comment received. It's only related to the agenda items on this agenda only. Members of the public can address the Commission once recognized by the chairperson for items listed on this agenda only. Comments are limited to four minutes. The Commission may extend this time by up to an additional four minutes by majority vote. Prior to addressing the Commission, members of the public must state their name and address for the record. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we will move on. Next, item number six, all business. So the first item is to discuss and vote on bids related to painting at the Holly Township Beach and Sorensen Park Nature Center. Now, I'm going to turn this over to our manager just to briefly explain to us all exactly what this bid is all about and how, uh, how they, they came in. And, uh, and there's going to be a lot of discussion because apparently the bids are, are different to some, to some extent, to some extent. I'm going to leave it at that. Because some bidders bid for, you know, a little bit more and others did not. But I'm going to turn it over to the manager now so she can explain, so.
Actually, the, the bids did come in relatively the same.
Oh, excellent.
What we did is we had them bid for the beach, the guard shack, the restrooms, the power washing and painting the pavilion. And so here at the nature center, we had them bid two different ways. We had them bid once just for the east wall, which is the wall that has the most flaws to the wood and that. And then also have them bid for the full nature center. And so they did come in relatively with, with all of those features. So would you like me to give the amounts for each one?
Um, before we do, I know there's some comments that some of the commissioners have mentioned to me early, so I'm going to, I'm going to see if you want to discuss that first. And then we can move forward.
Yeah, thank you. For the sake of transparency, I did want to mention that I did reach out to Dennis Morgan, one of the bidders for the painting, because I know his work. I'm well aware of his work and his work ethic. Dennis and I have been friends for a while. I just wanted to make that aware to the Commission and to the public for transparency.
Okay. So we can handle that in several ways. We can, uh, we can make a vote here and see if we think that there would be some sort of conflict of interest so the Commission can decide if that motion appears or just we simply feel that the Commissioner can objectively, you know, make a, make a decision on this. This is a really tough one for me.
It is.
Okay, it really is. And while I appreciate, you know, your, your candidness and your transparency, they're just so important to us all. I, uh, I'm going to respectfully ask that you simply listen. And, um, and depending on who the, the Commission decides, then, uh, then you may or may not vote. Now, that is, that's just me, okay? So I don't know how the others feel.
One point of clarification, Madam Chair. Without my vote, there will not be a quorum.
No, you, they'll, we still have a quorum.
Okay. Well, okay.
Right, we still have a quorum because that's, we're all here, you're here. The issue is, we're going to have to really get all of us to vote.
Right.
On this.
Okay.
So I don't know unless we can hold off on this because that's why we're having this special meeting because we've got to get these things done.
Yes.
Quickly. Or we can, we can hold off on this a little bit more to see if Commissioner.
I just saw Commissioner Hutchins just pull.
He's on his way?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So having said that, then can we just take a three-minute recess? And let, let him come in? Oh, here he is. There he is. Let's just do a three, a three-minute recess, okay, please? Is that okay? All right. Three-minute recess, please. Let me repeat what I just said. I apologize, I keep forgetting that we have these mics now and we need, we need to be very transparent. So now that Commissioner Hutchins is here, as I was explaining to him, the, uh, the manager just gave a brief overview of the various bids that we're looking at for, for the paintwork. And, uh, and we can consider it all or none at all. But Commissioner Wright mentioned that he, um, he has a personal relationship with one of the contractors and therefore feels conflicted. Now, I'm only one vote, but I would say that because of, of that, I would ask that he, he not participate in this, in this decision, okay? However, he can always listen to, to what we're discussing and things of that nature and ask questions, I suppose, but he may not vote. And, uh, and that is what I, that is what I feel. However, the Commission, if you feel that, uh, you think Commissioner Wright is, is able to do this without having any kind of concern, then, then we can, someone can place a motion on the table and, uh, and, and allow him to not just participate but also to, to vote. So there would have to be a motion and then we would go around the table and vote. Is there a motion for that, to allow Commissioner to vote?
Let's discuss a little bit about conflict of interest.
Okay.
If Mr. Wright feels that there is a conflict of interest because of a personal relationship with this person, he is obliged to not vote for a conflict of interest. So it really isn't up to us, it's up to Mr. Wright as a conflict of interest. It's how he feels, his depth of the relationship with that contractor is. So it's strictly up to him.
Oh, respectfully, Commissioner, um, the fact that he brought it out himself and made that a public knowledge, then it is, it is part of our decision now. And so I can, we can ask him if he feels that he can, you know, be, uh, is able to vote without having any kind of, you know, prejudice. We can ask him if he can do that. Or if he feels that because of his relationship that it would be best not to vote, then he can say that. And if that's the case, then one of the commissioners would have to make a motion to allow him to vote, and then it would have to be supported, and then we would have to vote on that. So Commissioner Wright, what are your thoughts, sir?
Well, I, um, my personal relationship with Mr. Morgan has been, um, for quite a few years, like I stated, not to vote. I, I think that would be the prudent thing to do.
Okay, very good.
However, I do reserve the right to enter into this discussion. Not necessarily to vote, but I would prefer, I would reserve my right to discuss.
What does the rest of the Commission feel? Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Again, it's just, I, I appreciate what, what you're, what you're doing, sir. It is, is being very transparent and, uh, but again, that, that it is, in my personal opinion, it is a conflict of interest. And so these are some of the things that we'll need to address in the future, okay? Okay, okay. So I'll go back to the manager and let her continue with her, uh, description and review, and then we, we can, we can discuss again, okay?
We did have three bids. I, I gave you the actual physical copies as they came in. Great Lakes Painting and Coatings. Their first bid is for Beach House subtotal, also Pavilion and Bathrooms. And that includes labor materials and power washing. And that came in at 6,268 dot 59. And then Great Lakes Painting and Coatings for the Full Nature Center included labor materials and power washing. I'm sorry. For just the east wall would be $6,742.91. And for the Full Nature Center, um, the total for everything would be 13,000 011.50. Then for Dennis Morgan, um, exterior painting, two coats, two colors, power washed and caulked, includes the beach, guard shack, restrooms, pavilion, and the nature center, east wall only, would be $13,850. And then for the Full Nature Center, including the exterior paint, two coats, two colors, power washed and caulked, would be $20,600. The last bid that we have is from a company, Exterior Painters, and they actually had four separate bids. And one is just for the east wall of the nature center, which included replacing T-111 siding, power washing, caulking, and applying Miratec trim boards. And that came in at $4,441. The Full Nature Center included painting two colors, installing the Miratec trim boards, installing the T-111 siding on the east wall as needed, power washing and caulking, came in at $8,765. And the beach guard shack at the beach came in at $4,248. And then the, um, that included painting two colors, power washing, the garage door and the entry door. And then the pavilion and the bathrooms came in at $7,120. And so the total with the east wall of the nature center only was $15,809. And the total with the Full Nature Center painted and trimmed added was $20,133.
133? Is that correct?
$20,133.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am, ma'am. Okay, so. Yes. Yes.
I don't see, how do I identify what this is?
Um, I did, yes, sorry about that. I did, um, contact the person who made the bid. If you look up at the top where it says the estimate number, there is a, uh, there's two of them you can identify because down here it does say Pavilion and the Bath House on bid 24537.
37 is what?
That is the Pavilion and the Bath House. And that total came in at $7,120.
So Pavilion and Bath is combined?
Correct.
And then 47 then is?
Yep, 47 is the guard shack at the beach. And that total is $4,248.
$4,448?
$4,248.
200, oh, I'm sorry. I see it. Gave a discount, okay.
Yep. And then bid 24531, up in the corner, the estimate number. That is for the Full Nature Center.
36, I'm sorry, was it Nature Center?
Um, 31, 531.
Oh.
And the full amount was $8,765. And the last bid for Exterior Painters was 2,000, or I'm sorry, 24536 is the estimate number. And that is for the east side of the nature center only. But that included replacing the T-111 and the, um, two colors and applying the trim boards. And that came in at $4,441. So again, um, the total for that, with the east wall of the nature center only, that came in at $15,809. And for the Full Nature Center painted and trimmed added was $20,133.
So let me make sure I'm reading this correctly. So Mary, um, what about Great Lakes Painting?
Yep, Great Lakes Painting just for, um, the beach portion. So that would be the beach house, the pavilion, and the bathrooms came in at $6,268.59. With the Full Nature Center painting, it was $6,742.91. So the total for the beach and the Full Nature Center was 13,000 011.50.
And, and with just doing partial, did they give us a partial number for that?
They did that.
Okay. Okay, so now that I've got the, the bids all together. So Dennis Morgan and his, he, uh, he also did not break it down into half, right? He, he was just full?
No, he did.
Oh, he did. I'm sorry. I see it now. I see it now. So for, uh, for partial, which is what I'm going to call it, in other words, just doing that wall, not doing the entire.
Correct.
His came out at, uh, 13,000.
13,850.
And, uh, and Exterior Painters came in at $15,809. And, and then Great Lakes? Great Lakes came in at?
Was that the 13,011?
13,000, yes, 011 and 50 cents.
And that was full?
That was, that was the full.
Oh, that was the full, so, oh, they didn't do partial. I'm sorry. Okay, that's why I'm trying to get it together. Okay, so no partial. And then to go back again. So, uh, Mr. or Morgan Company, Morgan Contractor, if you were to do the full, then his quote came in at $20,600. And, um, Exterior Painters came in at $20,133. And, um, and obviously, uh, Great Lakes, there's, is a 13,000 011.50, 50 cents. 13,000 0 dollars 11 cents for the whole thing.
Was Exterior Painter, that 20,000, also included the, the Miratec, the trim?
Correct.
Right, so there's, there's a, I think the difference was roughly high $4,000 or $5,000 with and without the trim.
They did the trim and they did the T-111 siding also.
Just so I'm clear, when you went through, their bid included changing the bad boards of the trim. And that was included in the full paint package?
For Exterior Painters.
All right, so if they only did the east wall, I'm not sure if there, there's trim to be replaced there or not?
They would be adding trim, I think. Because they did trim for the whole building.
Oh, all trim pieces would be replaced?
I, I think so.
Oh, because we have identified some that were rot.
Rotted on the back. Correct.
Okay. That's going to be hard to evaluate.
That's why we're here, special meeting. Because it is hard, it is very hard to, to decide here. The, the low bid, Great Lakes, that doesn't necessarily mean we have to pick the, the low bid. We're going to pick the best bid.
Excuse me?
Yes.
He does value out the trim, right? Page three of his quote.
Are you looking at the Great Lakes or which one?
Exterior.
Exterior Painters.
Exterior.
I was looking at page three.
What number?
You know, it, I, I'll explain too with Exterior Painters. You'll see the numbers where you don't have all the pages. And the reason you don't have all the pages is because their contract has all this legal stuff in between. So I only gave you the pages that have the actual bid numbers.
Got it, okay.
So, I'm sorry, um, it's on the 536 quote.
36?
That has the east wall only. It doesn't show trim. Let's see the nature center. It has trim broken out as well.
So I guess.
Oh, it doesn't mention Miratec up here.
So let me ask this question. Is everyone interested in doing the whole building? Or are you interested in just doing partial? What, what, what do you, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I think if we're, if we're going to, you know, do anything, we should do the entire thing. It doesn't make any sense to me to do half of the building and leave the other half not. I, I just assume do the whole building.
Anyone else?
I would agree with James.
Okay.
Because I, I know this side doesn't look real bad, possibly the front, but we've got a lot of rot out here that includes, I think, siding and trim. So that's about 50% of the building probably needs to be painted. This side's the worst. Plus I assume we're replacing at least three, if not four boards with new smart composite. So it's gotta be painted anyway.
Now, I will say that also we had checked with our maintenance person Mel. And Mel said that he would be comfortable replacing the T-one-eleven if you wanted him to do that as well. And I think, Joe, did you say that there was, um, already T-one-eleven here on site, right?
Yeah, four-way sheets up in the program.
Yeah, so.
At least five sheets, I think, right?
I don't know, I didn't put anything back, so I don't, I never did a count.
I think there's a minimum of four, and then there's a half piece. There could be five, four sheets.
I would like to say to the commission that, uh, Mr. Morgan is in attendance if there's any questions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You know, I'm looking at the Great Lakes, and on the back, it does show trim. I saw that, I think the trim.
Yeah, it's painting over there.
Is it painted?
Yeah.
I mean, it's under the materials, so.
Might be paint, cause I, I did not.
Maybe just the paint for those things?
Requesting any replacement of trim.
I assume you're right. It's just the paint for those pieces, okay.
Ms. Earl, did any of them, um, mention any kind of warranty or anything like that? I don't, I don't see that. E- even in their, um, in their legal language for, um, exterior paintings?
You know, I honestly did not look for that.
I would assume that if he found an obvious flaw in the performance of the application of the paint, that we could call him, he would come back and correct at no charge. I think everyone's using a, a, a top brand of paint, be it Benjamin Moore or Sherwin-Williams.
I will say that, um, when I met exterior painters over at the beach, he was telling me that his company is like the largest seller or buyer of Benjamin Moore paint, so.
So, um, I noticed that some of them also mentioned that they would do, um, that they would, uh, exterior painters, for example, they mentioned that they will do caulking before painting. And that they're gonna seal all the seams and cracks where needed. And they're gonna be using this, uh, PPG Top Gun. I don't, I don't see any, anyone else saying, uh, does that make a difference? Anyone who's an expert painter here?
Well, actually though, on, uh, Mr. Morgan's, it does say all buildings to be power washed and caulked. In two coats of paint.
Okay. So let me ask, uh, if, if it's okay with Mr. Morgan. Sir, can you, can you step up to the podium? I have some questions for you. And by the way.
You might have, uh, hit the button on the mic.
So, so you, you've heard some of our discussion, and, and I do appreciate very much you being here. And, and number two, um, I appreciate you submitting a bid as well. It looks like, uh, you, you would be the low bidder if, if we were to select you and to do the whole, to do the whole thing. If, if we were to be unsatisfied with some of the work that you had done, would you come back to correct it?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Can you tell us, can you tell me a little bit about your company?
Uh, I've been painting for probably twenty-five years, uh, on and off. Painting full-time for the last almost ten, you know? I do work for another company, this would be side work for me. Outside of that, is there any specific question?
So do you have insurance on all of that?
Yes.
Okay. And you'd be willing to provide us with a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. Cause we would ask the others as well.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, did I hear you say that he was going to be the low bidder?
Isn't he? Oh, I'm sorry, he's not the low bidder. I looked at Great Lakes, I apologize. Mr. Morgan, you, you are the high bidder. Yes. Thank you for correcting me, I apologize. Your total bid would come in at, came in. Your to, yeah, for the full thing, came in at twenty thousand, that's where I'm, that's where I was looking. Twenty thousand, six hundred for the full thing, right? And for partial, it's thirteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
That's correct.
Got it, okay. I apologize, all these numbers here. Okay. And, um, and then, uh, and then, um, the Great Lakes would be, they only submitted one bid, and that was for, to do the full thing. And their bid came in at thirteen thousand, eleven dollars and fifty cents. Okay. Okay. Do I have their name correct?
I believe so.
Yes, okay. That's not paint, I know. I know.
Do we have any more questions?
Uh, Mr. Mor, are there any, does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Morgan?
I, I just had one, if I may.
Yes.
Um, the exterior painters, as well as Great Lakes, had, um, selected the Benjamin Moore, um, what was it? The, sorry, the Regal Select, uh, Low Luster Exterior Latex coating. Why was yours different? Why did you use the Sherwin-Williams? Is there, is there a difference? Or?
Uh, there is a difference. Um, Sherwin-Williams is a, a better product, in my opinion. It lasts quite a bit longer. It's a guaranteed one coat, uh, eight to ten years. And then I apply two, just for the durability, and I think it looks nicer after the second as well. The Benjamin Moore isn't a bad product, I think you only get five years out of that. Being with the south wall here, being, you know, it gets so much sun that, that'll really make a difference in, uh, you know, three to four years, you'll see a big difference. So that's why I use that product.
Any other questions?
Just one comment.
Yes, sir.
I know quite a few, quite a few painters in the state, and I'd say the majority of those painters are using Sherwin-Williams. Due to the life factor. And I'm talking about six different painting companies.
So.
Usually in a bid, you would, if you do your homework, you would stipulate what paint you want in, change the bid. Because like I said, I did my research with six different painting contractors, big time contractors, and most of them were using Sherwin-Williams. Their warranty was better than like, Mr., um, you said here is that their life expectancy of paint lasts longer.
And it's, it's worth the investment to me, because like I said, if there is an issue, I would come back and fix it. And using the more expensive product just keeps me from having to come back. You know, so it's, it's worth it to me. I know Benjamin Moore is a cheaper product. It's not inferior by any means, but it, you know.
It's less expensive.
Yeah.
I personally prefer their interior trim to any other paint, so.
Which one's that?
Benjamin Moore.
Yeah. No, interior and exterior are two different games. You know, like I say, they're, they're not inferior products, they're just, you know, it is what it is.
There's, uh, Fords and Lincolns.
That's correct.
And the price difference is different, and that's what makes the difference in the quality of the product.
That is true.
That's why I touched out to a lot of painters I know, would say, where, where you guys use it? What's the best out there, cause I gotta do some painting of my own. So you gotta stay up with what's current.
Absolutely.
It's always changing.
Sir, um, how long will it take you to complete this work if we were to give you this assignment?
I, I believe, uh, it would take somewhere between, uh, four and five weeks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any, um, any other questions?
The other question I have is, um, the trim. Cause there is some pieces that will need to be fixed, is that right?
That's correct, but, um, Mel, our maintenance person, said he could handle that.
Okay.
It need be.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to aerospray this, or are you rolling, or what?
Uh, both. I will be applied with an airless sprayer, and then I roll it, so it actually pushes it into your, you know, into your wood. Uh, if you just spray it, it kinda just cling on top, and you can have problems with it flaking off later. So, uh, I always push it in with the roller after I spray it.
You're seeding your paint.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, very good.
I've dealt a lot of T-one-eleven, I dealt a lot of smart siding.
It sounds like it. I'm picking up a little bit of that, that is correct.
Yeah, I'm no spring chicken, and this ain't my first rodeo. Thank you very much for showing up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, so the other, the other big issue is, uh, our finances, our budget. To see if we can afford to do, to do this, either do the whole thing or, or the, or the partial thing. And I think originally, we were just looking at maybe just doing the partial. Uh, but we did as well want to think of maybe doing the whole thing because Commissioner Carl said here, we know we, it would make the whole building look better, and it's, it's long overdue, it's needed badly. Uh, okay, I've looked at our budget, you, you guys can take a look at our budget. I did ask our, uh, our accountant, and it's, it's in your, it's in your budget. I know it's all kinds of paper here, I apologize, but you need to see all this information. And, uh, this is as of April. Remember, we only have about a month and a half yet to go through our, through our budget, so I would say that these two items that we're considering tonight, these would probably be the only products that we will be able to finish off this year. Anything else, we would have to wait till the coming year, okay? So looking at the budget, um, under improvements, this is what, one of the things that we were waiting for, we budgeted.
And that's item number nine eighty-four at the bottom.
Yes, thank you, thank you, madam manager, I keep forgetting that. Look at number nine eighty-four, it's at the, at the bottom. Okay, so there's about forty-four there. And then if you look, uh, one more step up, we haven't spent that money at all. That's about fifteen thousand. And that's for, um, equipment or capital. We may have to do a budget adjustment in order to move it down to improvements, in order to be able to, um, to do both projects. And again, I'm just looking at what I know of what the other project could potentially cost. So then we do have some other funds that are available still, and this is under repairs and maintenance. If, if worse came to worse, and the numbers came in higher.
It's nine thirty-one.
Thank you. Item number, so we're looking at nine thirty-one, which is repairs and maintenance. We have about, uh, twelve-nine. Um, we look at, um, nine seventy-one, park equipment and capital, we have fifteen thousand there that we have not spent. And then we have nine eighty-four, uh, forty-four-four, for, uh, what we call improvements, okay? So depending on which we choose, if we decide to go with the low to the higher bid, uh, the high bid is much more than, uh, it's a little over seven thousand, seven thousand dollars if we, if we were to go with the higher bid. But we do like the paint that he's using, we do appreciate him, him coming, that says a lot to us. We appreciate the fact that he's willing to come back and do his work again. Should we have a question? We're looking at a time, we can anywhere between four to five weeks to get this done. Again, the others did not show, it didn't mean that we can't select them, okay, we can if we, if we so choose. But now hearing everything, is there any motion from the commission for us to, to consider any of these three bids?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
The beach will be opening soon. It would certainly be nice to have that painted sooner than later.
Okay.
So would you like to request that the beach be painted first?
It's, well, yeah, I would. Because it's more public. Um, we will be opening, it'd be nice to open with a fresh start. Um, this is hidden and perhaps, I mean, for our use and others.
That's for public.
Yeah. I think this would go second in order, in my opinion.
I have no qualms with that, if, let's do the beach, I don't think anybody, yes, sir?
What's the date today?
Today is May twenty-eighth.
And the beach is opening the eleventh. I don't think anybody, very few people with the weather changes and stuff, is gonna get the beach painted before it opens.
I don't think he necessarily was saying before it opened, but at least it'd be.
Well, by the time it opens. By the time it opens. I don't think that's gonna happen. That's just my consideration on the weather.
Okay, could you hold one second, sir, please? Thank you, though. Commissioner Carl, you wanted to say something? I saw you raise your hand, no? Okay. Uh, I, I, I understand your point, Commissioner Hutchins, um, but I have no qualms with getting the beach done, I mean, it's, it's long overdue.
I can see it getting done before this, but we're not gonna make opening day.
You're just explaining.
Yeah, we're not gonna make opening day.
I gotcha, I gotcha. So if we were to do the beach first, uh, which of the buildings would, would come first, then?
Well, I think the toughest one to do is the Pavilion. Cause you have to go in and power wash the ceiling, which is high. Get the dirt out of there, spray that, then spray, or paint the rest of the outside of that Pavilion.
Okay.
That's, that's a tall building, everything else is not much labor work at all.
Okay.
You could also argue that the first thing you see is the beach house. I mean, people pass right by it. I think picnickers would come later. But, you know, I, I, I don't disagree with what Joe said, it's more difficult, I think, to paint.
And that's our refuge due to the inclement weather.
Okay.
Is the Pavilion. So it's the most important, that, the bathrooms are the most important buildings on, on the beach.
Okay.
In my, in my point of view.
Okay, I, I agree.
I do have one concern, though, because for this fiscal year, it's supposed to be completed by thirty.
By June thirtieth. So we have to hurry up, that's why we're having this special meeting, we need to make a decision today.
One thing that has to be done, let's rephrase this comment, it has to be paid for by the, by the thirty-first of June. Has to be, we have to spend the money by thirty-first of June.
Correct. Okay. Before, before I, before I ask you to come back up, can you, can you come back to the podium so that it can be recorded, sir? Thank you. It's just this way the public can hear what you're saying, all right? Thank you. Now, before you do that, uh, I saw some hands here, so I wanna make sure that the commissions are the first to address any comments that they may wish to make. Commissioner Earl, was there something you wanted to say? No? Okay, Commissioner Ryan?
I just wanna say.
Yes.
June has thirty days.
Yeah, thirty days.
Thirty days.
I was just testing it. Three days has ever been.
Every single day. Okay. Any, any comments from any of the commissioners before I turn it over to, uh, to Mr. Morgan, sir?
Uh, I just wanted to address your concerns about the beach being open in time for your season. And I know I didn't clarify that in my, in my quote. But my original intentions were to get started on those three buildings over there first, because they're all together. And I was hoping to have those done between seven and nine days. To remind you, this is a part-time job, well, it, it's technically a part-time for me. But I was hoping to get those three buildings done very quickly with extra labor, within seven to nine days. And then I would be gone for probably two weeks before I could come back and finish this job. Which is why it would take. And then I would be gone for possibly two weeks before I could come back and finish this job, which is why it would take so long.
Do you think you could finish before the end of, of, of June?
All projects, I do.
You're not going to get any sleep, but.
That's okay, I can do without.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Do I hear a motion? Is there a motion from the commission to make a recommendation to any one of these, any of these contractors?
I think we should be budget conscious. Should be considered. I guess there's money for other projects.
Well, there won't be any more money because we're at the end of the fiscal year, so you can't carry forward, no, no, you don't. You, you have to budget, that's why, but we did budget, in next year's budget, additional funds to make some further repairs. So, and next year, we made sure that we added some, some dollars again for road maintenance and drainage. So we added some more money for that to complete, finish doing anything else and we had more than sufficient dollars for any other projects that we may have. So please, I appreciate what you're saying, but at the same time, one of the issues that I'm, that I, that was just brought to my attention is how long is this going to last? And I know nothing lasts forever, but I do, I do, would like quality work and I do want the paint to last longer than five years. Not that everything lasts forever, like our roads, I didn't say that. But, but still, if we can get this done and done quickly, again, I need to, I need to hear a motion before I say anything else.
One question is, if we don't spend the money, we can put that into our, into our, into our fund for capital improvements or into something else that we don't spend the money on.
No, sir.
Say we got two thousand dollars left over.
No, sir, it, it, it has to be spent this fiscal year.
All of it.
All of it. If, or if it doesn't, what you, what you all need to know is that it goes back to our fund balance, okay?
It goes back to fund balance. It isn't like we're throwing this on the burner.
Oh, no, no, no. So we don't spend all the money, it goes back to fund balance.
Which is what?
Which is, this is our, it is our rainy day fund.
Yeah.
But it still has to be spent by June thirtieth.
No.
No, it goes, it carries over to next year's fund balance.
Right.
So we don't have to, we don't have to burn the rest of the money or even send it to the moon.
Right.
I'm glad you clarified that.
Yes.
My one question is, or my one thought is, the price difference between the two products isn't going to be a lot of money. It's going to be a little bit money. So we could also, like I said previously, when you're putting on a bid, you can tell them we're looking at a certain paint. So we're not looking at spending five thousand dollars more for Sherwin-Williams over the other paint that they want to use. You know, like I say, it might be the difference between a Mercury and a Lincoln instead of a Ford and a Lincoln.
I understand.
So we could stipulate that we would like Sherwin-Williams painting the lowest bid from, if we pick the lowest bid.
Oh, okay.
There's, there's always compromise in everything.
But then that bid would probably go up, I'm assuming.
It would go up a bit, but yeah.
Well, here, here's the issue that we, that we have. But before I say anything, let me turn it over to the commission, so Commissioner Earl.
It has, do we know if the other two can complete the work by the end of June?
Unfortunately, they did not show, so we, we, we can't, that's why I'm, I'm pleased that, that this individual did show up. And we could not vote for this and we can go back and ask them these questions. So the paint, again, I don't know, there may be a difference, again, I don't know. But because we didn't stipulate that in our, in our bids, we can't really go back and change it unless we go back and redo it all over again. And we don't want to do that. Yes, sir.
Under a, if we go to vote on this, we can make stipulations. They say we pick the lowest bid and the stipulation is to be two things, time and difference and the cost of the material, the paint. And we would, we could pass this statement, if we could look at the stipulation from them. Or we can have another special meeting tomorrow.
Well, no, we can stipulate all we want, but it doesn't mean that it's going to get done and it's not, it's not part of our bid. It's not part of, that's why when we ask for bids, we need to be, again, we're learning here, you know, we're learning.
It's always apples to the apples.
Yes. And so, right now, each of them gave us their best bid. And so we have to go with that, okay? And we cannot go back and change certain things. That has to be specified. And so, again, we did not stipulate the time, we did not stipulate the paint. So we asked them to give us our, their best guess, their best estimate, I should say. And so this is what their contractors are recommending to us. So we can stipulate to this contractor because he is here and we can say to him, you know, before the end of, before the end of June. Of course, if something happens, obviously, things happen, we can, we can work with that, but again, that would be one of, one of the major requirements that we would ask. And of course, the paint, obviously, since we're looking at, which one is it, Sherwin?
Sherwin-Williams.
Sherwin-Williams. Based on the discussion here, that that might be a better quality paint and so be it, but we can't really stipulate that. We need to stipulate that at the beginning, at the beginning of the bid, not, not afterwards, with all due respect. We'd have to start all over again if we did that. So we have to make a decision. Is there a motion?
I would like to make another comment.
Okay. This is going to be hard.
There are additional things at the beach that need attention. We, for instance, the shuffleboard court, James and I spoke, was it yesterday? And like to throw out the notion that we improved that, but we possibly turned that into cornhole as opposed to shuffleboard. So it's still going to need improvement.
And we can do that come July one. We can look at that come July one, okay, of this year, all right?
Why?
Because.
Why must we wait till July one if we've got the money this year?
We, it depends on what we do today. I don't know how much, I don't know, I don't know how much that's going to cost.
Here's what I think, in the rainy day fund or whatever that fund was called, I was led to believe that we should go with the highest bid because we've got to spend that money.
Oh, no.
Well, that's kind of where.
That's what I, no, I don't think I ever said that, no.
It's like, we've got all this money, we've got to spend it or we lose it.
No, that's not what I said.
And I appreciate that.
Right.
Yeah.
No, 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 please.
That is a whole different reflection on, on our, on our choices and our budget.
Whatever we don't spend, we keep for next year.
But that wasn't expressed initially.
That's the way it is legally.
Yes, yes, and, and yes, I, please, I thought I made that clear, you know.
And if we like that money, come July first, after we get this all settled, we can make other improvements or expenditures in other places for that amount and we'll also have a new mount on top of that.
Now, Commissioner, again, this is something that jits together, that we identify specific projects instead of the way it's been done in the past where we just hope we have enough money. And so that cannot, that, that cannot continue. That's why in this next year's budget, we identified specific projects and we gave some estimates.
Just one comment about the past. We've never had a budget deficit as long as I've been here. I don't care who was doing the budget or who was spending the money, we never overspent, we never had a deficit. So we did a good job.
We're here.
Yep. So we, we watched our Ps and Qs and we paid attention to where the dollars were. Dimes make dollars. That's, we were always fiscally responsible. So we don't have a bad track record at all for the almost thirty years I've been, four years before I was here. So that's what that's all about, Harvey Sorenson, everybody else, they all did a good job.
Right.
We never overspent what we had and we always had the rainy day fund in there to carry over in case something broke. We used to take care of a lot more property than this with the farmers' debt and different things, and different programs. So, yeah, we, we were always fiscally responsible and you guys are doing a great job.
So, again, just based on the numbers that I see here, okay, based on the numbers, depending on what we choose, as I explained to you all, we have some funds to be able to do both projects. And, and we can, we can select the contractors that were, that are, that are being considered today. But again, if, if, if by some chance we choose the low bidder, it does not necessarily mean that we will have sufficient funds to be able to do anything else. Because we still have to look at the other project that's coming up and that's even more major and we're going to have a lot of discussion on that one, because that's, that's a big project. And that's three times or two times more of this amount here. So it does not necessarily mean that we, you know, we, we can do the, the, what do you call that game? Shuffleboard, yeah, the shuffleboard. I, I would love to do many more things, I would love to paint the inside of this building. I would love to put more trees out there, you know, but we can't do it all, we have to make a decision. That's why we're having this special meeting and it's, and it's, and it's hard. And we need to make a, we need, we need to make a decision, because if we don't, then we won't be able to get anything done. Okay?
One final comment?
Yes, sir. Oh, no, you can talk as much as you want, unfortunately.
I think we need to keep in mind, too, because of the collection of proposals, that exterior painters on the full of twenty thousand, was that one thirty-three?
Yes.
Did I get that right?
On, uh, great, yes, exterior painters, yes, sir.
That did include the trim, Mira-Tech replacing the trim. Otherwise, we have Mel doing it at our expense for both labor and material. Whereas, if I'm correct, exterior painters incorporates all that, correct, Mary?
I believe it does.
But they do, they use Benjamin Moore. Okay, and again, it's just so y'all know, it's not a big deal.
Point, point of clarification, Madam Manager, the request for bid, did that include replacement of the trim?
I don't know that we specifically talked about it, other than we did show him the ratted trim that we had and.
I, I guess my question was, did the contract, were the contractors asked to bid on the replacing, replacing of the trim?
I can speak for the bid I obtained and no, it was not requested.
So exterior painters, they are lower.
Right.
Okay, and they are doing the, they're doing the trim and at their, at their cost.
So the only thing we don't know about exterior painters is if they can get it completed?
Yes.
But also, maybe it's just me, but if you're talking about lower, exterior painters is twenty thousand, one thirty-three, including the whole nature center. And Great Lakes Painting came in at thirteen thousand, eleven dollars and fifty cents.
Yes, for the full thing. The low, the low bid is Great Lakes at thirteen thousand, eleven dollars and fifty cents. However, just keep in mind, they, they're not going to do the trim.
They're not going to replace the trim with a composite.
Right, right, and, and we don't know the timing, if they can do it, yes, sir?
One comment, between the two, between the lowest bid and the two higher bids, you're looking just ballpark around seven thousand dollars difference, seven thousand dollars difference.
Yes, I said that, yes.
With the exception that exterior painters includes changing the trim and painting the trim. Whereas that's going to be an extra cost if we choose to do that, which I think we are. We've got to pay for the labor on hand, Mel, and we have to purchase the trim.
If we do it ourselves, yes. Or we can go with exterior painters and they will do it for us.
Correct.
And they've already submitted that bid and they're, and they're a little lower by about five hundred dollars, maybe less, very low.
So.
Go ahead.
It just, it doesn't feel like it's really apples to, I mean, how long does a paint with Benjamin Moore last?
So I heard, I heard from, from Mr. Morgan that if we were to choose Benjamin Moore, that it could, it could last a little bit less, less time, five years, is that correct? Whereas, right, four to five, and if we were to choose the other one, it could go up as high as eight to ten, okay?
Double the time.
Right. So you could do that. Now, we could, this is a suggestion, because we, because they're not here. So timing is, is, is important. So we could, we could, stipulation we could put, if we were to go with exterior, because they're a little lower and they're going to do the trim, instead of us having to pay for the trim, so that saves, that saves us some money. We could stipulate that it would depend on the, on the time, if they were, if they would, if they would be willing to, could do it within, or before the end of, of June. And if they say no, then we could authorize the, the manager with another contractor of our picking, either Morgan or, or Great Lakes, if that is what we, we would choose. Now, if we go with a low bidder, obviously, which is very low, seven thousand dollars, and as, as Commissioner Hutchins mentions, seven thousand dollars is, is, I mean, we're still being, you know, good stewards of our dollars and we want to make sure that that gets done correctly. But it is by no means an exorbitant amount of, of dollars. But it is still, we are good stewards, we want to make sure that we spend our money wisely. Okay, yes, sir?
If we took a couple-minute break, Todd, who gave you the bid, has given his number, called with questions. Could we, I could reach out to the other for the question, can you complete this by June third?
Okay, so let me do this. Is there any objection by the commission versus doing that?
No, and what I would do is I call an intermission here for ten minutes.
Okay.
And this, this can be taken care of.
Right.
Ten minutes, you'll be able to hold everybody.
And please, call the, call the other one as well. We should, we should, what we do to one, we do to all.
Exactly.
So please try calling the other.
Only asking if they can complete the job by June thirtieth.
Okay, is that, is that correct, everyone? Is that the only question? Okay, so.
But what about the paint difference? What about the Sherwin?
The paint, uh, you.
Because it seems like in the Great Lakes one, we're mostly talking about paint, right? So essentially, pardon?
And timing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Exactly.
Right.
I would, I would ask the contractor, like you said, what about the paint, what, what about Sherwin-Williams? If he says, I don't care what we use, the material cost is the same, whatever he wants to say.
I think exterior painters probably would not change because he was very proud of the fact, well, I mean, it says right in their thing that they use Benjamin Moore, so I don't think they would change.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, do I hear?
One question, Madam Chair, could we also ask Mr. Morgan if he'd be willing to do the trim as well since?
That's what, that's what they were saying, that's what they were saying. You could ask, ask both of them about the paint, okay?
But James, are you, sorry, for sure, right, are you saying, would you speak with?
Right, to make sure the bids are as close as possible to each other.
Just to try to place apples to apples here, so before any more time goes, let's, let's do the call quickly on, on both. If we can reach them both, great, if not, then we have to make a decision, okay, without the call. All right, I'm asking for a ten-minute break, please. Is there, is there any objection for that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very none. Ten-minute break, please. Okay, so after hearing everybody, it looks like we were able to contact the other contractors as well. And from what I know right this second, they're both willing to use the other paint. But the other one recommends, still recommends Benjamin. He says it's a much better paint than the other. But again, it's, it will, you know, we can discuss, but he's willing to change the paint. Okay? And, and Mary is confirming, again, the question regarding the, the trim, one more time. And...
Well, the other thing was, can they complete the job by the...
And then, can they complete the job? Could you ask Mary that while she's asking that question real quick? I believe one of them said, yes, they can do it, and I don't know about the one that's, that they're working on right now. All right, thank you, and, and I apologize to everybody that's here. We're, we're doing our best to try to come up with a good decision. These are tax dollars, and every penny counts, as you can see. And we're doing our best to, to make sure that we get, we get this. We're still learning, we're a new board, and we're, we're doing our best to provide what's, what's good for our community. So we thank you. We thank you for your time.
...for a really long time. I might have to graduate from college high school next year, so...
Awesome.
We would like to see him, so he's done the parks, he's spent a lot of time.
Thank you. Yes. Excellent. Uh, no, it's, we're so, we're so lucky to have the parks that we have here. So now, you know, you know, we, we wanna make sure that we take good care of them, and that we, we spend our dollars as best we can. Okay, so Mary is back. Let, let me, just for confirmation, because there's just, I just did a summation of what everybody says, but I'm gonna let the two individuals that spoke with the, with the other two contractors have their, their, their time. So Commissioner, who did you speak with, and what did they say?
I spoke with Dan, I don't know his last name, he's the one that prepared the quote with Great Lakes painting. The first question simply was, if awarded the bid, can you complete the job by June 30th? And he said, sure, I'm confident we can do that. I also added, and another question, your, your bid includes Benjamin Moore. If you were asked to switch to Sherwin Williams, would you be willing and could you do that? He said, absolutely, we use both. In fact, some products they use of Sherwin, they prefer on certain applications. So it's certain, they're open to the, to the request, and they would change.
And they can do it within...
And they can do it.
Okay.
By June 30th.
By June 30th. Okay, very good. Now, any questions for the Commissioner? Okay. Uh, Manager?
I had talked to Todd LaRocella. He is the person who came out and did the bid originally. He is with Exterior Painters, which is a larger company. And so he said that there would be no problem, they could finish by June 30th. The other thing is, is he would be willing to have them switch to the Sherwin Williams, although he does not feel it's as superior of a paint, so...
Okay.
I did not get ahold of him as far as asking him about the Mira-Tec trim.
Okay. But he's the only one that's, that'll be doing the, the trim work, correct?
That is correct.
Right. Okay. Any other comments or questions? So the only other comment that I, that I would like to, to spend the best amount of money and, and, and use our, but I, I think it would be good to have this, these individuals, whoever, the fact that they're willing to do the trim work instead of our staff, I think, is a good thing. And the fact that they will be using their materials is a, is a good thing. It'll save us some dollars on the other side. We won't need to use our staff to do the trim work, so that will save us time there. And, and also materials. And plus, this company is aware of what we're doing, and he's willing to do, meet the, the time constraints that we've given them as well. So that's kind of a, a plus that I see with, with this. And it's, again, it would be seven thousand dollars. I don't know how much it would cost if we would have our staff do it, but more than likely, it, it could potentially be either the same or a little bit less. Again, not knowing what Mel needs, but still, it, it, again, it would be done by the same people, the same work, so forth and so on. Okay?
Can I, can I ask one question?
Yes, oh, many questions.
So Commissioner Hutchins had brought up the fact that he did not feel that the amount of Mira-Tec that was quoted would cover around the building. So I just wanna clarify that if it turns out that it's just the back portion, if that would change anybody's opinion.
So personally, let me ask you this, area that needs to be done?
Yes.
Okay.
Along the back.
Okay, so for me, I...
Because actually, on the east wall, there is no trim.
Okay.
Currently.
All right, so I have, I personally have no qualms. What about the rest of y'all? No? 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 Okay. All right. Now, so we know that there's a, that the good news is they're willing to use this paint that we want. They're all going to be able to, to meet the time constraints.
This is him, do you want me to confirm?
Yes, please. Would you let, ask him the question, and get that out of our way? Out of our heads? That's for all. And, and then, and then the trim. Again, the difference is, is, is seven thousand. Again, we're going to be spending that money anyways, maybe a little less with our own staff, if we, if we decide.
I, I support your statement. Because I think Mel and Zach are spread thin.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of maintenance work to be done, and to take them away from...
From other work, yes.
Other projects. So I, that was my thought.
Yes, sir?
Mel and Zach are gonna be running thin, because we got a lot of mowing. This rain is just, I think, I, we don't fertilize the lawns, because otherwise, we'd be mowing every other, the village is mowing every other day.
Yeah, it keeps growing.
Yeah, so I think, you know, with Mel's, Mel's situation and Zach's, that they're, they got two places to take care of now, the beach and here. So, you know, there's a lot to be done, and we'll still keep them busy, because we can always do other projects. We still got trees to drop and brush to remove, so if we, if they have, if they want more hours, or, you know, use up their hours, we've got more work for them. We always find more work for those two guys.
Definitely. There's so much, so many things that need to be done, yes.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna beat them to death.
No, we don't.
That's, that's tough. Sometimes coming...
So just for the audience, your information, we're just waiting to receive some additional information from the, from the contractor regarding the trim work that he's doing, and we should get an answer shortly on that. So I hope that you can see how difficult it is to make this decision.
I agree with us.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Again, we, we do our best to, to try to balance everything out, and we're learning. Next time, we are going to do a much different process.
We always have a plan, A, B, and C.
[laughing]
And if that isn't working, we adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
I would ask, Madam Chair, that we put a policy together to make sure that when we ask for bids, they're the same.
We ask, yes, the same. I know, and that's one of the things that I'm hoping with, with legal assistance, that we can develop a, a policy, although I do believe that we have a policy now, but it's, it's, it doesn't really specify.
The biggest thing is, we don't need some lawyer telling us how to do A, B, and C.
No, we don't. That's, that's not what the lawyer would be doing.
And that's what this is getting to be, is we gotta put a bid proposal out there. Here's where our proposal is. We want these two doors painted, and those two doors painted, both sides. That's it. Apples to apples.
Right.
So we don't get concreted by, oh, yeah, this over here, and that over there. We have to look at the whole, whole total project and spell it out for the contractor.
Correct.
Because he can't second-guess us or figure out anything else.
No, 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 the, the, the legal person, the only purpose of the legal, well, one of the, one of the purposes would be to make sure that our policy is fair, and that it is in compliance with the law, and, and that we're doing it correctly. That's, that's the only thing. The, the legal will not tell us how to do our jobs, how to choose, who to choose. It's just to make sure that, whatever our policy is, that it is, it is fair, and it is done, being done in accordance with the law.
Well, we only have three more contracts to go, so I think that's gonna be the big learning curve.
Yeah.
And it's all different. You know, the chip pile, the road maintenance, the painting, everything else.
I know. And unfortunately for us, because we're, we're new... And unfortunately for us, because we're new, we've only been on this board for a little bit of time, could you ask Mary to hurry up? Poor Mary. I know she's doing her best, I know. But yes, so again, legal is just to keep us all on equal basis and that we're doing everything legally. And I think the way we're doing it now, it's okay, but as you can see, it takes a lot more work to make something.
...
Yes. And again, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you being here. That says a lot. Thank you. Thank you very much. I mean, some cities' policies that I've worked with, some of them even go beyond, you know, other things that they ask us to do. Almost. Okay. Okay, so instead of just sitting around here mumbling, let's take a five-minute break and let's give Mary enough time. Okay? So we apologize. We're going to have to give the manager at least five more minutes. So the time is 7:58. We will be back in five minutes. Thank you. You're back. Less than five minutes. Mary?
I apologize. So that was my error. He said what he quoted was actually replacing any rotted boards of the trim. And that included, like, up in the peaks along the building and that as well. He said he could do trim around the building, but he would have to re-quote as far as that.
Okay. Oh, that's fine.
We can go with what we got.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I agree. So it looks like, just to quickly summarize to the public that's out there, it looks like we are looking at three quotes, and we're looking at doing not just the beach, but we're also going to be doing the nature center. And we're going to look at more than just one of the walls. We're looking at the entire building, correct? And that includes the trim. So Morgan, their bid came in at $20,600 for the whole thing. The only difference with them is that they did not include the trim, replacement of rotted trim. Okay? Now, Exterior Painters, their bid came in at $20,133. They are including to do, to remove or replace the rotted trim. And their bid is also to do both. And they're also willing to use the paint that we want, and they can do it within the timeframe that we've asked them to do. The last is Great Lakes. And Great Lakes, their bid came in at $13,011.50, and they submitted that one bid to do both areas. But if I look at their, at their bid, the only, the only good news is we were able to reach them, and they're in a rotted trim, but they are willing to use the paint that we want, that we want. And then also, I think, in discussions here with the Commission, we are looking to start our work at the beach area.
So just for clarification, you said that the Great Lakes quote does include replacing the trim?
No, no.
Does not?
Does not. They don't include... Their bid is $13,011.50, but they don't include the replacement of the trim. And they'll do the whole thing, and they can meet the timeframe. Okay. And as one of the Commissioners mentioned, the difference is between the high bid and the low bid is around a little bit, about 7,000. But again, I think the big difference here is the trim, which is important, and the time, and the fact that they're willing to use the paint that we want them to do. So having said all of that, what is the Commission like to do? Do I hear a motion, please?
I motion that we consider Exterior Painters principally because of the trim, alleviating our staff from that detail.
Okay. Is there a support? Is there a support? Commissioner Earl? Commissioner Hutchins? Remember the other, the... Okay, I can't say anything else. You guys have to make a decision. Is there a support to consider Exterior Painters at a cost of $20,133? They are the middle bid. They are the middle bid. And they are willing to replace the rotted trim, and they're willing to use the paint that we want, and they can meet the time constraint. They can do it by April, I mean, before the end of June.
I'll support.
You will support? Okay. So Commissioner Earl supports. All right, so now we have a motion to approve Exterior Painters made by Commissioner...
Carl.
Carl? Sorry. And supported by Commissioner Earl to approve Exterior Painters with those requirements and that the cost for this work will be for $20,133. Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hutchins?
Pardon?
Commissioner Hutchins?
No.
Commissioner Carl?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSessa?
This is so hard. Yes.
Commissioner Earl? Yes. And Commissioner Wright?
No.
Is abstaining?
He's abstaining. You need to abstain, sir.
Abstaining?
Yes, sir. Because you're not going to, you're not going to... Oh, that's right. It's not the person that you're...
Right, no.
So he's...
Can he vote? I guess we said you could. Okay. All right. You said no. Okay, so we do have a majority, 3-2. So motion passed. All right, moving on. Thank you very much. Mr. Morgan, we appreciate your time, sir. It was so close. It was so close.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I appreciate it very much.
Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. This is to discuss and vote on bids related to the improvement of drain issues from the barn to the stop sign at Sorensen Park. Now, I'm going to turn it over to our manager to go over these bids again. And again, unfortunately, even though we said, we asked our contractors to consider X amount, some of the bids came in to do more, more than that. But I do believe that we can separate the two. Okay?
Okay, I would, after we, and I'll say, Commissioner Carl and Commissioner Hutchins worked on this, along with myself, and after we had four contractors come out and look at the property, we did come together and compose a letter describing the project that we wanted, and Commissioner Carl even drew like a map that kind of went with it. And I did email this to the four contractors. One of the contractors, after that point, did withdraw from bidding, because he said he was very busy and he felt that the other contractors would do a good job. So we do have four, I'm sorry, three bids, but what we were considering, as Chairperson DeSessa said, was the process from the barn down to the stop sign, so only including the section nearest to the nature center. And one of the bids came in with the bid from East Holly Road all the way to the nature center, including the parking lot. So that bid came in at $32,000. And that included ditching 750 feet along the driveway to the nature center, tubes cleaned by others, place 750-ton 23A road gravel from East Holly Road to the nature center, crown and gravel road, including parking lot, level extra dirt on the road to the brush pile. Culvert III, which was by the barn, was found to be buried, and this particular contractor recommended lengthening that tube by 20 feet. And that came in at $32,000.
Pardon?
Yes.
Could you restate, that was tube number three? They did find it across the driveway to the pole barn?
Yes.
Because we got four culverts.
Yes, it said culvert III was found to be buried, recommend lengthening tube by 20 feet.
Okay.
So in the, in this map, it shows culvert IV goes under the actual road, and it shows culvert III is under the driveway by the barn.
Yes.
So that's the...
That was the mystery culvert. I couldn't...
Yeah.
Because that was there before, because we had to get the water from the ball field across to the pit to go down into the swamp, so that was number three culvert. Oh, boy.
Yeah, so... So another bid was $9,700, but this included digging 100-foot of trench and find the end of the culvert pipe leading under the road. Install 20 feet of culvert pipe for walking path within the ditch line. Install a small area of two-by-three crushed concrete for a spillway for the north side of the nature center. Grade a swale on the south side of the building, leading to a low point for proper water drainage. Reestablish a crown on the road leading into the nature center using material on-site, cleaning out the ditch line water flow. Cut out three to four inches of sand material on the drive in front of the nature center and replace with three to four inches of crushed 21 double-A limestone. And that bid came in at $9,700. And the last bid came in at $8,400. And the scope of the work includes reshape ditches from pole barn to the nature center, apply gray, clay slash gravel mix to new parking area and road to create a crown, finish grade with grader. And it said note, if culvert number three needs to be replaced, a 12-inch by 30-foot new culvert will be used for replacement. Cost would be $740, so that 840 would go up at that point. I'm sorry, 8,400 would go up at that point.
So the total number for them is?
About $9,140.
$9,140.
If we replace the culvert.
Before I ask my questions, I'd like to first ask the Commission to address any questions that they may have. I know I have quite a few, but I will wait. Commissioners?
Did Bruce Law indicate how long number three is? He would increase it by 20 feet, did you say?
He said culvert III was found to be buried. He recommends lengthening the tube by 20 feet. He didn't specify how long it currently is.
I mean, they're all buried. I think what he meant is both ends were insulated. We didn't know where it starts and where it'd be.
Correct. But I think when he says he recommends lengthening it by 20 feet, he's referring to exactly what Commissioner Hutchins was talking about, is take it farther into the swampy area.
Correct.
Yeah. That would be my guess. Right?
At one time, before the pole barn was ever built, that drainage was all intact. So we went across the road from the ball diamond, we dumped into that ditch, and that ditch was open till we got to the other culvert. So now that we built the pole barn, we never got to extend that culvert. So that's why they want to put in more, because the pole barn wasn't there. That pole barn came years afterward, so that's what the ditch was to the culvert, to number three culvert, and into the swamp.
So the 12 by 30 culvert would be appropriate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just have to add to the piece. They got a culvert clamp, they'll clamp onto what we got, and away we go. So that cut down the price of putting in a brand-new piece of plastic or anything else. We don't have road salt here, so we don't worry about gelatinized rusting, because we're on drainage sand, and we don't have road salt. Some of the contractors only like to put in plastic or cement, preferably plastic is cheaper. But we'll work with what we got. I don't see no problem with that at all.
Okay. Any other questions? Good points. So I have a couple of questions. So the first, my first question is, did Lowell, did they submit a proposal responding to our request as we sent to them?
No, he only had the one.
The large one? Okay. So this is, so we did not ask for the whole thing. We asked for this much.
Well, I think we did. He received the request for proposal.
But the request for proposal?
After he visited, so he did re... We assume he received it, because it was sent to him.
No, no, that's not my question. My question is, did he submit a proposal responding to our request? And the answer was no. He went above and beyond that.
Right.
Right. Correct? So now, the decision here is, are we willing to look at what we need to do, or are we looking to make this project bigger? Now...
Now we run into the problem that others weren't asked to propose.
We're back to apples and pineapples. We got two apples and a pineapple.
Okay.
We got to straighten out the pineapple or straighten out the two apples, one of the two. One of the two. Either way, we'll either do the whole project, have they resubmit for the whole project? Or have Bruce Lau cut down his project to the smaller project? And we are one way or the other. Have we got to get back to apples and apples or pineapples and pineapples? One of the two.
Question, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, sir.
Madam Manager. Was the request made to Bruce Lau to submit another bid pertaining to your letter due on the night of May?
No, what I did was after we came up with the letter, I emailed it to all of the four people. And that, and one of the people, um, after I had done that, I had texted with him, because he was the first person who responded. And he responded the next morning.
Okay.
After he came out and visited the site. So, I thought it was unusual that he didn't respond.
Right.
So, I just contacted him and said, I just want the email that included the letter and the map. Days went by, and then he contacted me and he said, I didn't get it. And so, I sent it to him. But then he never sent back. This is, we're not talking about the high bid. We're not. This is a different person.
Okay.
So, several days went by and he didn't respond. So, I called and left a voicemail for him. And I still didn't get a response. So, I think, um, I just went with his original bid, which only included the, in front of the nature center.
That was the original bid.
Big Green, Big Green was the company for that.
Okay, but, but Bruce Lau did not return your request for a new bid? Just?
He only, no, that, the letter was sent before he sent this bid.
Right, right. But he, he submitted the bid that he submitted, not what we asked for.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Trying to go back, like you said, apples to apples. And that's, that's a difficulty. Again, I know that, um, in next year's budget, not to say that this is what we're gonna, well, yeah, this is what we're gonna do, because this time we did come up with projects for next year. We said that we would, we would look at the rest of it. And, uh, and we did set aside some funds to continue our concerns on, uh, as it relates to drainage and, and roads. Uh, before I say anything else, yes, sir?
To your last comment, I think you were talking about Big Green.
Correct.
And his third paragraph under, are they, does that say sailed? But any rate, reestablish a crown on the road leading into the nature center. I, my take is, leading into, he's, he's talking about this entrance way coming in. So, I think he is proposing from kind of the map, from some point up here leading in to the nature center.
He's responding to our request, as we said, no?
Just to, I received this bid the next morning after he came out to the site. He had not received that letter at that point.
Was he then, in his initial meeting, was he only asked to address out that front door? Because again, what I'm saying, he's, he's commenting on, he would re-crown the road leading in. He took it upon himself to include basically what we would say, based on what he commented.
Well, plus the fact that when I contacted him, he did not resubmit a different bid.
Okay.
So, I think he was comfortable. And I'm assuming he's comfortable with the amount that he had bid.
Okay.
And who are we talking about again?
Big Green.
Yes, sir. When we go, does this Bruce Lau does that? We, okay, I have one comment about Big Green.
Okay.
And he was, I talked to, he couldn't bid the big project, because it is a, its equipment's too small. That's why we did this first. It was low impact, low machinery. So, less machinery, smaller machinery, you usually don't have to pay as much. So, that's what he told me was, that he doesn't have the big stuff to do from Holly Road to the top of the baseball hill. That's project number two. Project number one, he could do, Big Green, that was Danny.
I'm agreeing with you. I, I don't know. I have a, after he came.
Yeah, he was the first one to come back with a bid.
Okay, Commissioner Earl?
I noticed there's, I'm not really sure, because I don't understand the size difference. But I noticed that the crushed limestone was a different size, Bruce Lau and the Big Green. One was twenty-one double A and one is twenty-three A.
Here's the difference. Road gravel is graded different to the size. Twenty-eight is standard road gravel. Limestone is broken up into a different size, and that's why the number is different. Usually limestone costs more, but it doesn't seat as well, even doing compaction. So, they have to come in compact and heavier. It costs more, it costs more later. That's my take on the difference between. Crushed concrete is the cheapest. But like somebody says, depends on who's doing the crushing. A lot of times you get pieces of wire or rerod in it, it can cause a flat tire. So, it depends on where you buy your crushed concrete, the quality of the crushability. If they don't run a magnet through it to get rid of the steel, that's what you're paying for. Crushed concrete is cheapest, twenty, uh, the road gravel mix is the next one higher, and crushed limestone is higher than that. That's my take on, we got, in a link.
So, that's what concerns me. This is a, this is a little different. At least with the paintwork, we could find similarities with this. It's not the same. It, it seems that all three bidders came up with something totally different. And, um, I'm not comfortable with that.
I, I'd also point out with Big Green, um, the last paragraph that Cindy pointed out, he's also saying, just in front of the nature center, that he would apply, um, a, a top coat of, um, gravel or, what's he saying?
Limestone.
Limestone. Whereas, whereas the other, right, as I'm reading Prose, um, he's applying gravel from the barn area all the way down. He's also included the, the parking area, which is what we made here behind us by removing the tree. So, there's a substantial difference in the application, the volume of topping.
In the lasting, in, in, like, how long they last?
No, the volume, he's, Big Green is up front.
So, why don't you show her?
Where the other one is from the top down.
On the map.
Plus the parking area.
Show her the map, exactly, explain, explain the map.
Big Green, as I read it, is applying the topping here.
Gotcha.
Whereas Prose is from here down, plus the parking area here that we, we made.
And, uh, and then, um...
I was meaning the difference between limestone and using clay gravel mix that's in our own. What's the difference as far as durability, lasting?
I'll let Joe respond to that. I mean, I seen both materials, but given...
In front of the pole barn, when we built the pole barn, we couldn't afford to put cement in it. So, I had to bring in twenty-eight gravel clay mix, because we're on sand. And I took my tractor and I comp, I took the, the clay gravel mix and put it in the barn, compacted it with the bucket, pounded it down, then we started parking vehicles in there. And I took the rest of it and made the drive, the one driveway that goes out to our, our street out here. And that's been thirty, well, not three, twenty years. It's not gone nowhere, because it's clay gravel mix and it's packed, just like a rope. So, I made a rope inside the barn, and then we used that. We compacted that more, and then we poured the cement about a year or two later, when we could afford the cement, to cement that. That driveway in front of the pole barn sliding door has been there since we built the pole barn. So, it's pretty durable. And that's what they use on the rope. Sometimes you see them just spread gravel. Well, that's if they've got a good base, so it'll sink in, in soft spots. We gotta, with this, putting the mix in here, we have sand. So, they're gonna kind of tear this up and then pack that clay gravel mix in to make more of a hard, durable surface. And it's cheaper than limestone. Yeah, it, like I say, we got sand.
Is limestone better? Is limestone better?
Depends on the application, if they're gonna bring in a big roller and tamp it in. The best time to build this ro, rope would have been when it was wet. They could have had, if they had that finished grading and it got wet and spongy, they could bring their limestone in, let it lay down flat, and they could compact it in with a big, like a steam roller. Bring it in and pack it in to build a base. So, but we're into, nonetheless, we're towards the end of the dry, we're gonna be into the dry season in, in July. But, uh, when my dad had, he had a driveway on the north side of the house. So, every year, the frost went out, we had mud that deep. So, every two years, he'd have twenty yards of gravel running. It was that deep in the driveway. In a couple of years, it was down to half an inch. We kept packing it down with our cars. So, we'd wait two years, bring another twenty yards. We had to dig across that driveway for, to hold up our, our new septic tank. We should have got a jack, because it was that much clay gravel mixed out in there over all those years of packing that, maybe, for cars. We weren't doing trucks. I, I told my dad that you, you spent too much on gravel.
So, Commissioners, I have a big concern on this, on this project. Because unlike the other project, you know, we could make it all apples to apples. This project, I, I think, uh, at, at this point, uh, it, it's very difficult. I know you, I know it's so important. We all want this project done. Can we, can we go back? Well, first of all, first of all, originally, we decided we were only going to do phase one. Two, where?
Just the, the driveway leading into here and the parking spot improvement.
Okay.
And the road out here, that was phase one. Phase two, because we didn't know how much money we had, is the big project from East Holly Road to the top of the Ball Diamonds, because it's gonna take bulldozers or graders, which is big money. Just a startup or a bulldozer or grader is two hundred dollars. That's two hundred bucks. So, they gotta move it here and use it.
So, can, go ahead.
Big Green has smaller equipment, it doesn't use that much fuel, but you can still do the small projects, which this is a small project. That hill, the entrance in the hill up to the ball fields is a big project, due to the ditching and the grading and getting rid of some of that dang sand. As you noticed, I went up the other day and compacted the parking area.
Yep.
With the old John Deere tractor. I see everybody's parking. I, I didn't see anybody get stuck yet, so I've been beating that down with that John Deere. Yep.
Okay, so, now going back to what I said, this, these proposals are all very different. We can't make phone calls and ask to see changes. However, we can ask the, our, our manager to contact these individuals, and we can decide here exactly how we're going to decide what this project is gonna be. Are we all going to continue to stay with just phase one and then look at the other? Now, the, the, all these different bids is that, let's say, we were going to do the big project, then it looks like it could potentially cost thirty-two thousand. So, this is doable, even in next year's budget. Of course, we would spend all our money, you know, to do the road, if that was the case, if we chose to do that next year. Or, we can, uh, like I said, and again, based on what we decided here, we can do this by phases and do fa, phase two and maybe phase three. Is this going to save some dollars? Personally, I don't think so, because unless we choose, maybe one of the things we could do is, uh... I, I, I don't know, is really the answer. I don't know if it, if it's gonna save us money if we do phase. The only good thing about phases is we know how much it's gonna cost and we can plan for it. Those are, those are two good things. One other good thing is that where, if we were to choose a contractor, um, and they did a good job, then the, then for the next phase, that would, that would be a tell-all for us as well, that we can use as a guide, that this contractor did a good job and we could potentially consider him. But again, that's, it's up to the, to the commission here. I have, I have one vote. So, let's, let me get this straight first, because I don't think we can approve these. I'm sorry, I really don't. There are three different, there, did anybody respond to what we asked for, Madam Manager?
Great, actually, um, yes, he was, he was the last person to submit a bid. And, um, actually, let me, yeah.
I think that's correct.
And he did come out and, uh, that. I guess my concern as well is if we have those different things, would we necessarily keep all of these bids? Like particularly with Mr. Prose, you know?
Well, what is?
Would he necessarily bid specifically for this smaller project? I think, you know, with Big Green, as Mr. Hutchins was saying, if we were to bid this as the big project, that probably would eliminate him from being able to even bid. But we might be able to go back and ask the one person who came out and did the site review and that, but did not submit a bid. Because at the time, he said that he was very busy and that, but possibly, I don't know, Ms. Commissioner Carl, um, had, you know, primarily dealt with him, if he would come back with a bid, if he knew he was bidding for the big project.
So, so my concern, you know, besides, you know, deciding for us to decide whether we're gonna go big or by phases, let's, let's, let's decide that first, okay? Because I'm tired of going around and around in circles. Do we want to do this by phase? What, what say you all? Do you want to do this by phase, or should we do it all at once?
Well, a couple of things.
Okay.
If we had, when you brought up the budget, and we added up item nine eighty-four, nine seventy-one, and nine thirty-one entities, we roughly have seventy-two thousand dollars. If we subtract the paint proposal of...
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, we're left with, let's say, fifty-two thousand. So, I think there's sufficient money in this year's budget to afford both phases. I assume that. Secondly, you made a point, would we save in doing phase one and two collectively at one time? I, I believe to a minor point, we would, because the equipment would be here. Joe made a statement, you start it up, it's gonna cost. So, bringing the equipment up two times versus one time, I believe would save. You know, with a gravel hauler, which is a bigger box, you would probably be more efficient versus a dump truck of volume to do just phase one. So, I, I think it's important to realize, if we combine phases, there would be a collective savings if we choose to go that route.
Okay. No, I, I did the, I did the numbers too before you, before you looked at that, and I looked at that. Yes, I think, uh, based on, on these costs. However, 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 I don't know if we can go with, uh, with Lowe's bid, because he did not bid for what we asked him to bid for. He's bidding the big project.
Well, would, would that be a material if we decide to change from phase one to phase one and two?
It would be, it would be. Now, here's where the lawyer comes in. Okay, I'm not a lawyer. Here's a lawyer would come in and say, excuse me, Commissioners, you need to stick with what you said. You cannot change midway. You'd have to go out and rebid. Okay. Because then, you know, who knows? And, 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 and of course, these bids are up now, maybe they'll be lower, you know, with the bids are, I don't know. I, I, I'm not, uh, to be honest with you, I'm not too impressed with, with two of the, two of the bids, because they, well, with, with low excavating, I would have preferred a lot more information for, for the thirty-two thousand. It does not say a lot in terms of how that's gonna cost. So, I would like more detail, other than, I, I, I would like to know a little bit more about the materials that they're going to be using.
Well, he specified in the bid, he did spec, they specified clay gravel mix.
Okay, but he does not in his, in his bid?
Road gravel.
Road gravel. Road gravel. So, is it the same? Is it the same? I don't know.
You know...
He, he actually did so, put twenty-three A.
Oh, twenty-three A, okay, twenty-three A.
I just don't know, is that what the gravel mix is?
Yeah, twenty-three A should be clay gravel mix.
Okay, okay. So that is the same. All right, so that's good. All right, that's good.
Twenty, twenty-three A is, is chipped, isn't it?
No, it's, it washed gravel. It's about that big.
And it does include, because I remember Contractor Lau saying that he had, he went out and purchased and he's got a, a pile of the clay gravel mix. I don't think he referred to it specifically as twenty-three A, but he called it a clay gravel mix. He went out, it's good stuff, and he stockpiled it.
And I stand corrected, he did mention twenty-three A and that is exactly what, what we're asking for, so that's a good thing, okay? But the problem with his proposal is, as I said, it's not apples to apples. And so, what I would respectfully ask us to do, because, let's say, let's say we go with the big one. Let's say we go with the big one. Then the other two who submitted something totally different than what we asked, they're gonna say, hey, well, wait a minute, you know, why didn't you tell me about this big? I would've done this one, so we can't do that.
Well, no, I, I totally agree with that. If we're going to change midstream, we need to go back.
We need to go back.
Have all of them and say...
Let's make a decision if we wanna do phase one and two.
Well, that's what I said. That's what I asked first. Okay, do we want to go by phases? Okay, is there a motion that says we're gonna go by phase? Now that we know what we know and we know that we, we can, it looks like it's within our budgetary constraints, even for next year, if we choose to do this. Of course, again, it, it, it will place some limitations, but we'll know. Um, we, we can, we can go out for bid now and, uh, and we can ask them to start in July one, okay? Or, or, uh, we can use some of our funds for this year and some of the funds for next year. You know, we could, we could do that. Uh, so let's make our decision first. Do we wanna look at the entire project or do we want to go by, by piece now?
I can say, one of the things that when, um, we were talking to each of the contractors, the majority of them said, if you do not correct the top part, the drainage from, right Joe, the drainage from the parking lot and that, that it will not correct the problem down here. It will continue to be an issue.
It would, it, by correcting the problems down here also, well, it's start back up the hill. That's the beginning, that's the top of the waterfall. We're trying to slow, we have to slow the water down. And that's what Lau said, we was out here with the village, BPW. Redo your ditching and put in jetty's. I call them jetty's. It's broken concrete. Like I said, go up to Ball Wind Road, turn right, go up on the expressway, you'll see how they jetty to slow the water down. Now, with the ditches, with the, the four culverts cleaned out and it's pitched right, that water will come, even still come down the hill into that ditch and go out to the swamp. So we can head it off the pass. Right now, we're helping it go down the road because we already cut off the pass. So as the water comes down that hill, it'll go into culvert number three and into the swamp before it gets down the road. So, that's the cause and effect of, of getting this done also to get rid, to get the water in. Then we can go down and figure out where our ditches are and at least try to put in temporary ones, which isn't hard to do, to slow the water down. But right now, we gotta get the hill, the water coming down from the ball fields and the road coming in to get into the ditch where culvert number four and three are located to get it into the swamp instead of coming down the road because we have no ditches there.
So all that says, we need to start over?
Yep.
And, um, and it looks like we want to, uh, do it all as a whole. That's what that tells me. And it looks like, based on these, these bids, we may be able to do that. Now, when we get the bid, we could, again, because given the time, again, one of the questions we would have to ask them is, can you finish this project by the end of, before the end of April? I mean, uh, June, I'm sorry. I don't know why April keeps sticking in my head, before the end of June. We could ask that question. And if not, then we can, we can pay, we can, we can prepare here. Again, we need a lawyer. We can ask the attorneys that we can pay half this fiscal year, half next fiscal year, depending on when they finish, okay? We could do it that way.
That's the biggest thing is, who's, one guy backed already because he's already loaded up. So, it's, our time, we're behind the eight goal. And we, this is, the painting needs to be done, but the ditching and stuff, we'll get into the dry season sooner or later. So it's not a big priority. But, um, with that said, you know, I would look at just getting this straightened around and then work on the hill. Because like I say, we can cut the water off and get it to culvert number three, we got it made. The culvert number three is buried, so it won't get into the swamp. So it goes down the road and goes to culvert number two, which washes out and then down the hill.
Okay.
So it all depends on when you wanna do it, you know, and what we got to accomplish.
We're going, we're going around in circles.
Is that a combination, then you're talking only from Ball Fields down? Top of the hill down and include the entrance here? Or you're only saying from the barn down?
From the barn down is, is, is phase one. Phase two is East Holly Road to the top of the ball field. And there's another problem at East Holly Road, thank you, Oklahoma County. Our, we used to drain out and it was, they, they had to put in a apron. Well, we used to drain out to the apron and go down in the ditch. But when they came through and put two inches more of asphalt on that, they should've tapered our apron in. Instead, they brought it all the way up, so now we got a two-inch dam that stays there. We can't get to the ditch to drain out by our, our entrance. So that's the other problem.
Okay, so, I, 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 I like what you're saying, sir, I do. Uh, but, I'm not so sure, I'm not an engineer, if, if this phase should be... I, I agree. I, personally, I, I think we could make it into phases. Uh, but we should consider the project as a whole. We can ask the, the consultant to say, break this up into... Two?
Two.
Two phases, two phases. So, but tell us which one, you have the engineering people, should we do the hill first? Or should we do the nature center first? What should we do? Which is first? You decide. And then, be the bid, unless we ourselves wanna make that decision ourselves here and say, let's do the nature first and then we'll do the hill as second. I am not an engineer.
Well, well, if you're saying like that me and Jeffrey had it too, as everybody said, the biggest cause of phase number one is phase number two. So they said, we should go to the source and do that. I said, well, you know, if we have enough money, it'd be nice because you're talking big equipment, big money, big equipment. So, if we have the money, I would start with phase two first, get the hill done, and then come down to phase one. If we have the money.
We do, okay? We do have the money. We have the funds this year, okay? However, we need to go back and ask these individuals and open it up all over again because it's gonna be new and say, let's get some proposals, submit us some proposals. We, we can ask people, again, to resubmit. And then we can, we can do it, phase one will be the hill, phase two will, will be the nature center all the way to the, to the ballpark. Correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Now, my comment is, the most used of this park right now is from East Holly Road to the top of the hill in the ball fields. We got disc golf up there, we got Little League up there, we got a lot of people using stuff up there, dog walkers, everything else. That, I'm getting tired of packing the hill down with the John Deere. And people are probably getting tired of getting stuck down there. Yeah, I would look at doing that to be phase one. Let's get that out of the way. It's the most used, you know, it's kinda like the front door and the back door. You know, we have to protect our linoleum and our rugs coming in the front door because everybody comes in the front door and doesn't go out the back door. Let's get the front door fixed from East Holly Road to the top of the ball fields because that's the biggest use. How many cars is out there tonight?
Four.
Yeah, forty, fifty, yeah. Oh, we're almost done here.
Okay, can I ask one thing though?
Yes.
Because they are used so heavily right now, would the contractors be able to even use or install this and not inconvenience the people who are coming for the ball games and the disc golf?
That's a good point.
Well, one thing is, that's a wide enough road and they're talking about making it a little bit narrow where they'll be parking on your site. But they can do, you do, if I was gonna use a bulldozer, I go up the right-hand side of the hill first and take some of that dirt and put it on the left-hand side because it's like this, so I can start building up. So you only gotta disturb half of that. Now, once they get that graded with a bulldozer, you can park on it. You know, you got a twelve-thousand-pound caterpillar up there packing dirt now. So they're gonna grade that, get the grading and the ditching in, and that way, then they'll come and do the other half. So, you know, they probably do that in two days, two to four days if they got the equipment, is to get it rough graded and do the finish grade.
But how, and just because I don't know how often are the fields used?
Our spring, our spring season ends in mid-June, so...
And then, how long do you have a break to be able to fall season too?
Fall, fall ball starts at the end of August.
So, there's your time, a lot of folks. You can get it all done, let them park their dozers and their junk out there. We got time. The disc golf might be a little, uh, a little inconvenient for a while, you know? Unless they have a tournament or something. Most of the time, I see six or eight cars up there. Well, if we got that tore up or whatever, they can park down here and walk up the hill and start playing disc golf or play it backwards, eighteen back to one, you know what I'm saying? There's always a way to skin the cat.
So...
With the dry season's coming up.
Yes.
You guys are gonna be done when again?
Uh, mid-June and spring.
Well, guess what? We're almost there.
Yep.
You know?
Almost.
Twenty days out, maybe something like that. Everybody's got a chance to get a break and get their equipment here and figure out what to do. I'd say strike while the iron's hot. Let's get this most-used part done first because we're gonna be mainly focused at the beach. So we got time to do phase one. We'll change that to phase one. This'll be phase two.
Okay, so now, dollar-wise, okay, dollar-wise, we can, depending, we can go out to and rebid these quotes and ask them, one company, to do both phases, okay? That makes sense to me, all right? Doesn't make sense to hire two different companies. It makes sense to hire one company. Because as you said, they got their equipment here, you know, the prices could, could potentially be lower. I, I, I agree with you on that. So, let's go out, rebid this, rewrite this. Did you get, uh, what we're looking for, Madam Manager? Phase one will be...
East Holly Road to the top of the ball field.
Okay.
Top of the hill or ball field.
All right, and we are looking for what type of materials?
Well, they'll be using, uh, uh, twenty, twenty, twenty-one A road gravel. And then they'll be using con- busted concrete about this big to put the jetty's in, the ditches. After they ditch it, then they're gonna grade it, compact where, and get rid of some of the silt sand down here, which we have a good place to put it, and, which is the road going to the brush box because there's a buffalo hole down there we can fill. But anyhow, we get that all graded and get it ditched and compacted and get the jetty's put in where needed. And, um, that should be the end of phase one.
Okay, so phase one, we can ask them, we would prefer that they finish it all, you know, by the end of, uh, depending on the price, okay, because we don't have a ton of money, but we have enough money if we were to do one of them, you know, the whole thing. We could ask them to, what could they finish by the end of June, you know? Tell us that. And then, phase two, uh, we could do, uh, for next, next fiscal year, okay? And again, I, I gotta make sure, I gotta, I gotta talk to the, the, is, uh, contract-wise. Can I, 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 I believe that I can contract with a contractor for next fiscal year. I believe, but I, again, this is where legal comes in and, and can help us out on that. You know, can I do that? So I will, I'll see what I can do and find, get some help there. I think, I think we can, as long as we do it this time and then we specify the, the date and time. Or who knows, maybe this, this contractor may be able to finish the whole thing on this fiscal year. And, uh, and then the other question that I have is, would the three of you be willing to meet again with these contractors, whoever submits, who wants to submit a bid and discuss exactly, and say the same thing, please? So I want you all to be together when you meet with the, with the consultant?
Well, we need a propos- contract proposal.
Yes, well, that's why I'm asking the manager.
We wanna look at apples for phase one and apples for phase two. And we stated what we're looking for and what we want the ditching and, uh...
Can you work with, uh, with our manager to make sure that those items are placed on a proposal? Make sure that they're specified on that, please? The same thing with you, Commissioner, please. Uh, work with our manager so that she can, you know, just like she did this proposal, make sure that that's specified. I think the proposal that she wrote was excellent, but we need to make a little bit more clarification and we need to look at the time. And then look at phase one, phase two, and, uh...
So we're referring to the phases now. This used to be phase one, this is now phase two.
Correct.
That's phase one.
Correct. Is that correct? Everybody agree with that? We're gonna do the ball fields first even though it's busiest time. We'll do it.
So the bid is gonna be for the entire project, which is phase...
The, the bids will be for phase one and then the bid for phase two.
No, we, no, it'll be for the entire project, but it'll be broken up into two...
Completed in two phases, but the bid is for one.
Yes.
Well, the, the total, the total of both bids will be the total of the whole project.
Yeah.
Phase one, phase two.
That's one bid though, right?
Right, yes, because...
Because we don't want two different companies bidding for phase one or phase two, so we're gonna do one bid.
Right.
Including two...
The contractor will be bidding phase one and phase two.
Correct, correct.
Complete.
Could that be delineated by timeline?
Well, when you all meet together, yes.
Well, I think that's gonna be on our question proposal.
You could specify that, okay.
That the initial phase is, has to be completed. It's gonna start here and includes East Holly Forward, the top of the hill down must be...
Completed.
Begin, begin by and end by. And then, then we restate from the barn down.
To east.
Must start, commence, then, and end, boom. So I think that's a, a natural way to delineate what we're talking about. It's a whole, but it's separated by timeline.
Yes, that's...
Time separated.
Yes, it's, it's time separated.
The winter fall, fall stuff start?
Fall starts at the end of August.
End of August, wow.
This is, I know...
We got two months to get this done.
I know.
It's no problem.
I know. It's, uh, I think it can be done within two months. I believe that it can be, but again, it's, I think so. I mean, we're not asking you to do any major excavating or anything like that. The other thing that, 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 again, just for you, when you guys put this together, uh, please make sure that you make a note on culvert three because you need to decide whether or not we're gonna replace it or not, and I think that should be our decision, you know?
Well, culvert three, everybody said they gotta extend culvert three to get it through there. So we understand that's in, that's gonna be a phase two project.
Okay.
It goes from the main road, from the pole wire down to here is phase two.
Okay.
Well, one of the bids came in and then added another seven-hundred-and-fifty if it...
Correct.
So, it's in there, but it's kinda not in there.
It's not in there.
Right.
Only one actually probably brought a metal detector and determined that there is a culvert there.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why it was...
Because I had two contractors say, one was, uh, Big Green. He said, I'll get the village's metal detector, borrow it. And the other one, I think it was Bruce Law, said, I'll bring my metal detector. We'll find out the culverts. I tried to think back and picture, you know, twenty-five years ago of the culverts that laid out there. What was there and what wasn't? And I said, I think there's a culvert in there because we all agreed, take the water up here, dump it down by the ball diamond, bring it across the main road, dump it over here. You have to have a culvert to dump it into the swamp. So I said, there's a culvert there. That was culvert number three.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm not at all an engineer or involved in any of this stuff. But it seems to me that if you had all this big equipment and everything, you would wanna do this project all at one time and not break it up like that.
Okay.
Well, I think the biggest reason why we're breaking it up is in case we get stuck with something. In case this guy's got another project or, you know, he do it. Time is, our time is, we're not in, we can't dictate time.
No, I understand.
These guys got, our contractors would say, like, like the one gentleman, he said, well, I'm doing this, it's my side. These guys got, our contractors would say, like, like the one gentleman, he said, well, I'm doing this, this is my side. Okay, that takes way from time.
Like, you know, part of this is the fact that we are inexperienced at doing this. So we've already taken two to three weeks just on this process. And now we're going back because we did it incorrectly.
Yes.
Well, we got money now.
Well, we, well, now we know how much it costs. It's not that we got money, it's that now we know how much it costs.
Mary, that's a great point. It is, I agree.
Okay, so what if we do it this way?
Commissioner, right.
Okay.
When, when is the open window for Little League? Ends mid-June?
Uh, the spring season ends mid-June.
Okay, so you have an exact date, like a June fifteen?
Let me pull it up.
So you're trying to set up a timeline?
I'm trying to, if, uh, we gotta be very specific what we request.
Yes, I agree.
And if we can add start as soon as and end for completion. And it's a great point, that the equipment's gonna be here.
Yes.
And we got the funds. You know, we should look at this as doing the whole thing.
Okay, so. But, but here's the issue, okay? Because we're gonna go out to rebid. These, these quote, these bids can come in differently, okay? Very, it could come in higher.
It could.
Okay.
However, I think, uh.
So, so that's why we're trying to go with phases. So in the event that happens, we can say, okay, we got money for this phase, for this budget, and we can do next year and put, and, and use monies there in that year. Now, it doesn't mean, and this is what I wanted to say, we can ask in our, in our proposal, we can say, we ask, we respectfully ask you to submit it in two phases.
Two phases.
However, if you think you can finish this by the, before the end of June thirtieth, then, you know, please prepare that as well and tell us.
The biggest thing is, the difference between the phases is, the big jobs, big equipment. You ain't gonna get big equipment down in here. They're gonna probably bring out about a D-eight dozer, which is a good-sized dozer. And that thing's gonna move. You can't get a D-eight down this driveway, do anything, it's too small. So in a backhoe, they're gonna have to use a backhoe to ditching probably. You can use a backhoe down here, you can use a smaller piece of equipment, like a s- a smaller front-end loader or whatever down here to do your grade, your rough grading. But you're not gonna get a D-eight down this road.
Right, and, and so that's what I'm saying, okay? That's the, the breakup, because not just the time, but also the money. I don't know what the bids are gonna come in. Right now, the bids look really good as a whole, and we could do it. We could, we could afford to do this, but if by some chance, something happens and we, you know, we're gonna get some new bids, we can break it up.
That's a valid point.
And we can, we can, we can afford to do it.
Yeah, and I think the clue to that was, here's the timeline. And, but submit it in, in two phases.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Right, and, and this way, you know, we can, uh, the other thing that I would like to ask the Commissioner, so now we all agree, we wanna do this with one contractor, correct? We don't wanna, we don't wanna have two separate contractors doing.
This is one contractor project. Phase one, phase two, one contractor.
Okay.
And that's how we're gonna sell it. You got it all, and like I say, Big Green will probably, probably have to back up cause he doesn't have the equipment to do the big hill.
Okay.
Mr. Carl, the, uh, I checked the schedule and with all the rainy days and we passed, we're gonna have to reschedule. I wouldn't feel comfortable saying anything before June twelfth.
Okay.
The second week of June.
So June twelve would be when you're, you think you'll be completing?
Yes.
Right, so that would be the initial, no sooner than. And then the end was August?
That I don't know. Um, our schedules are dictated by Quad Town, like Benton, uh, does up the schedule. We usually start around the end of August, beginning of September, so.
If we said roughly August twenty?
August twenty is a Wednesday.
I, I, I.
The twenty-second? Or we, I guess we can give permission to work on the weekends too, that's, you know? But again, there's some contractors that don't work on weekends. And, and there's some cities that don't want people working on weekends. Cause it disturbs people's, you know, time.
I think August twenty-second would be the recent.
Okay, that's our window then, which will go on our, our P A.
Okay.
And what it's gonna come down to is the contractors' bids, if they got the time and the equipment.
Right.
Cause that hill is a big undertaking, that's quite a bit out there. There's big equipment.
Correct, and I'm glad that we're looking at this as one whole project. This way, we deal, we deal with the issue all together and we'll be able to, to, uh, address the big concern, which is the hill coming down here and then all the way down to East Holly Road. And, and this way, we'll, we'll be able to, um, better use time. Hopefully, we'll get some good quotes or good bids again, I should say, and we'll be able to, to finish it. If not, we can, we can use this, this fiscal year to do this project and the next fiscal year to do the other phase. And we can do that. My concern again, I'm gonna check, uh, I believe we can, as long as we, we approve it in this fiscal year, uh, that we can approve, you know, one contract in two separate fiscal years. Do you understand the concern?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. All right, I will, I will find out as quickly as I can on that. And if the three of you would please, uh, work on the proposal as quickly as possible and notify, uh, these individuals that, uh, that the, uh, Commission decided to instead look at the project as a whole in two separate phases and, and timeline. And, uh, and we'll give them that information quickly. And it's just updating, uh, uh, the proposal that was already put together by the manager. Not looking to make a lot of changes to that. I think that's, I think it's well, well-written and well-said. But I think the one that you guys will be working on, I mean, the Commissioner will be working on, will be, uh, will be a little bit more specific and we can do this.
We'll do our best.
And I know you guys will, and I appreciate all the work that you've done. We're learning here, uh, but we wanna make sure that we use these monies wisely. And, uh, and who knows, if we don't have to spend all the money this fiscal year, we'll be able to do some other projects. So, so again, you know, it's, it's, uh, we've got, we, we'll do better as time goes by when we do our budgeting and make sure.
Just clarify though?
Yes, please.
So you're saying that you wanna do this project as a whole? But you're going to break it up into two phases? How are we to put that on the letter?
We, we just, so when we do this, we can say, uh, phase one, we'll incorporate this, this space, this area. Phase two, we'll incorporate this area.
I think it.
You're not specifying though, I mean, you're not breaking up the timeline necessarily, right?
No.
I think it's a cost breakdown. Give us from grain, grain, from East Holly, this, you know, the turn up to the top of the hill. Break that cost, material, what, you know? And then, also then from the barn down here, all of that.
Now, the timeframe, the timeframe, I don't think they can, I mean, I think they could, I just don't know if we, we get, we, we get bids as quickly. Ideally, is, is they could finish, you know, before the end of, of, of June, ideally, but I, I mean, it's.
That interferes with Little League.
Yes, that would, that would interfere with Little League, so we wouldn't be able to do that. So we will be able to do some this fiscal year correctly? Correct? Am I correct?
I am, I'm sure.
Just mid-June to the end of June, June.
Yeah, we've got half of June.
Okay, so then the answer is no. This project will now be postponed till next fiscal year.
You said you were gonna incorporate, see if we could start and use monies, that's how I understood.
Can only use the monies this year if we actually work on the project. If we do phase one this fiscal year, at the end, this fiscal year ends, uh.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
So then you wanna change this July one through August twenty-two?
We could, we could, yeah, apparently, we're not gonna do this project this year, is what we're, is what I, I guess we, I just found out. I thought we were gonna try to do something this year.
If we did, it would, it would greatly interfere with the parking situation with Little League. So, given what we have, it makes sense now to go July one through August twenty-two is our window.
And, I mean, that also gives them a little more time schedule-wise. Because they may certainly be already booked.
Everybody's busy right now.
That's right, I just.
I don't care, we're, you know, we're building houses in Holly still, on the Polte subdivision down through there. And there's excavators and bulldozers laying all over the place and the, the gas station, look at that place. They got equipment sitting there. Everybody's doing the small jobs, this there or that there, front-end loaders, backhoes, small dozers. So everybody's tied up right now. There's less contractors out there, big contractors. The big contractors are up north in, I don't know, stuck to the forestry or whoever else. The small guys.
The real guys are on I seventy-five.
Okay, so from what I hear now, in order to, to address the concerns with Little League, we're not gonna be doing this project till next fiscal year. So that means I don't, I don't need, I don't need an answer to the question, I already know the answer. We'll do it next year, this project will, you know, we won't do it. We can look at other projects to see if we can do something this year for other projects. And, but we've only got, what, a month?
So that's why I wanted to break it down to phases. We got from June tenth to whatever.
June thirtieth?
Yeah, well, from the Little League stop, we got from that time on to do phase one or phase two. You know, we can get stuff started and still split it into a phase pay-wise.
Okay, well, that's what I thought we were doing. That's what I, personally, that's what I thought we were doing, but now, we're saying that we're not.
For clarity, then we can start here from barn down, cause that wouldn't interfere with.
Well, the big thing is here, right now, we're not doing too much. We're going to the beach here pretty soon, the tenth, tenth, tenth to eleventh of June. Most of the activity's gonna be out there, and this is still parkable up here in the hill. So we could start phase two down here and call this back to phase one and get that done this fiscal year, then start on the other one.
So start on phase two next fiscal year. Which would be, um, going down to, um, what is it, East Holly Road or?
Yeah, East Holly Road.
So.
Okay, if you're doing that though, we can look at those bids. If you're looking at doing just the nature center section, we could continue with the bids that we have.
But if we do that, Mary, if we do, if we look at these bids, I, again, I'm looking at them and I ask the question, does any one of these bids address the proposal?
I think two of them do.
Yeah.
Two of them do which ones?
Pros.
Pros do.
And Big Green.
Okay, but if we, if we approve them, let's say we do that, okay? Then, phase two, as we've gone around and around in circles, will have to be rebid.
It would.
And we will do it next year.
Cause Big Green would have to drop and we'd have to go back techni- maybe to Dave.
Yeah.
And we will have.
I would say just stick with initial plan, let's get this done and then, cause we're gonna actually go right next to phase two on the big hill, so anything we can get done here isn't gonna get ruined.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? This'll be finished, and then we'll go back to, this is phase one, that's phase two. We'll do this in the fiscal year and next year, we'll do phase two from East Holly Road to the top of it.
That's a good point. If this gets done, it's finished, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
And then we're, we're saying, take some of the scrapes that you remove and we're allowing them to dump down the two-track over here. They're gonna be destroying what we got done.
That's what I was just gonna say, like, what is the damage that could be with the big machinery? And would it be, it seems like it would be a little part of.
The big thing is, if we get this done, it's gonna be more of these path road, it's gonna be more substantial. And the only thing they're gonna bring down and through here is a front-end loader with some sand and stuff. And most of that will be filled, this big ridge that comes down through here.
Mm-hmm.
To the culvert number two, all that material's this deep and that wide is going down, down the road here. So when we get done, all of our material that we aren't gonna use here is gonna be down on the brush pile road in the buffalo hole, it'll be done.
Okay, so we're going around in circles here and we're gonna back to where we started. And, uh, and I thought, I thought originally what we had said was that these proposals do not respond to the, uh, the request from, made by the, the man- the manager. Now you're telling me two of them do. That's confusing to me, but okay. Is that correct? To meet your requirements, is that correct? Madam Manager?
As far as I know.
Okay, so they will, they will crown and ditch the driveway from the pole barn to the parking lot, of the nature center to the stop sign. The material to be used for completion is clay gravel mix or clean, no metal crushed concrete. Three, culvert three needs to be determined if it exists, and if it does not exist, then the culvert will need to be installed. Schedule, June thirtieth, fifth, excess griding from the nature center to the brush wood pile. Six, jetting of culverts will be arranged by Holly Township Parks after all other work is completed. Seven, Holly Township Parks has a tax-exempt number, uh, never mind. And then bids should be received by May seventeenth, so, okay.
So the one thing though, for me, is with Big Green. Because this bid came in before that letter and before the map. I'm not clear that he is actually doing from the barn all the way to the stop sign.
Who's that?
Big Green.
Danny.
So I'm looking at Big Green and he says, um, install a small area of two-by-three crushed concrete for a spillway, uh, for the north side of the nature center.
Paragraph number three addresses that.
How does that, it just?
Establish a crown on the road leading into the nature center.
Yeah.
But where does that start?
It's the other road.
The road leading to the nature.
It's up there.
At the moose. You're here.
At the moose.
Okay, so if we can confirm that, okay? If we can confirm that, I'm sorry, cause I don't, I don't see that, but okay, uh, then we can consider this. But okay, so we're gonna go back, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're not gonna consider this as one project. We're now gonna consider this into, into, uh, two projects. And two different contractors are gonna be, and I'm okay with that, guys, if that's what you want. That's, that's fine. Um, but, now, I just wanna be clear with everybody, that's what we're gonna do. This is why, in, in the future, we're going to fix this so that we don't, we don't do this. We have to tell the consultants to stick to the proposal that we asked for, and if they don't.
But I think we need to be clear before we even submit a proposal on what we're actually.
Definitely, that's what I thought we were doing, but apparently, we kinda did it a little bit afterwards.
I have two sensitivities. One is Little League and what we're gonna do to the parking structure situation. The other sensitivity is if, if this gets done before that and it's gonna require the transport of materials down this road, it's like painting a, a floor, refinishing a floor, and then you're gonna run heavy equipment on it. Uh, I'd rather see this get done within the window we established, July one through August twenty-two, and they can start there and they end here. So everything is done and they don't disturb what. It's, it, so the equipment's here and they don't disturb what, what is done first.
Well, there is no need for heavy equipment to come down through here to the brush pile.
This is where I would feel like, it would be like the contractors, we're saying, these are the things that we want to have done. For us to put it into phase one and phase two gives, limits them. If, if we say to the contractors, this is what we need to have done, would it make a difference? You know, like, I, I mean, I don't even know that it needs to be asked that. I, if a contractor goes back and comes through with the, and tears up that road, I would assume they would fix it.
Well, not necessarily. So then we have to make sure that we, we put that into contract.
It's an assumption that we should put into writing, you know, if we are gonna do it.
Well, there's no reason, doing this first, there's no reason phase two, the big one, to have to come down through there.
There's no removal of anything in taking it down there.
No, they're gonna grade all that. Going up the hill is like this, that one ditch towards ball fields. You're gonna take all that excess grade material, you're gonna take it over and push it over to the, to the left. Because that's where it needs to be filled. You ain't gonna cut the road down, or you're gonna straighten it out so it's crowded. Right now, the road's in the exact, like this. So that left side is deep. All this material that's up here, on the berm from the pole barn to culvert number two, is gonna be taken and put back on, by the brush pile in the buffalo holes on the road. So there's no reason that any of this other material that's gonna be graded, all that's gonna be graded and the road's gonna be leveled back out and bent.
All right, I'm good then, if we're not gonna disturb this.
We're not gonna disturb this, there's no reason for it.
Then I can remove that sensitivity.
Okay, okay. All right, so we're gonna go back to where we started. And we are going to go with what we said we wanted to do. And we are going to stick with the bid that we asked these individuals to submit. And then we'll do another bid for next, next year. The only thing that I would like when we do next year is to say, you know, if you have to come through here, you know, through the nature center, let's say, Joe, I'm sorry, they, they have to come here for whatever reason, that they will have to repair whatever, whatever they break, whatever they mess. We can put that in it. And hope, or we can just say, we can restrict them and say, don't come up here. Just stick to this place. And we can do that, too. We, we, we've done it in roads where we say, you only go X places and don't disturb this other place, because if you do, then you're gonna be responsible for fixing it if you, if you break it.
The biggest piece of equipment we have that comes down through here now is the village. Big tire, soft tire, front end loader, backhoes, and a ten-yard dump truck, you know, trailer dump truck.
It's gonna come here in front?
Yeah, it comes down through here. So that's the heaviest equipment, which once we eat this packed out here and made like a road drain, they'll compact that even more.
By, by driving through here?
By driving through with not heavy equipment, equipment.
Okay.
But like I said, the heavy equipment that's gonna be up on the big jobs is gonna be road reater and bulldozers.
Okay.
Big stuff. And that's what, I haven't seen yet, they already did Falk Road, they graded that, the county did, they corriged it. They missed us. Usually they bring the road reater up here and help me out.
I'm surprised, that's why I asked, I think I asked the manager, why, why hasn't the county come up here? We need to call them. Okay, so, one more time, we've agreed to break it up. We're gonna do the proposal as submitted by bid. There are two bidders that we could consider, the other bidder, unless we want to, but going around and around in circles again, we're not going to consider the, the big proposal, right? Am I correct? We're not going to consider the, the proposal that was submitted by, by Lowell for thirty-two thousand, because that, that's not what we asked for.
Right.
Correct, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, everybody agrees?
Yep.
Okay. So now, we're gonna go with considering the due. Greg Prose, excavating, their, even though their bid is at eight thousand four hundred, I'm going to ask that we also include the seven forty, just in case, okay? We can, we, we can tell them if you need to replace, or we can ask them, let me ask this, Joe, should we just have them replace it? Is it, just make them do it?
Well, the bid says, if it does not need to be, then the culvert would just, I mean, it does say if.
If the culvert needs replaced, then they'll do this. And it'll cost us another seven hundred and forty dollars, correct?
Did Big Green include replacing?
And Big Green does not. Big Green does not address it at all.
Okay.
Unless, unless you guys see somewhere.
Well, is that the twenty feet of culvert pipe in the first paragraph?
He says five feet into the pipe, like under the car, and install twenty feet of culvert.
But that was not up by the barn.
That says the walking path.
Oh, yeah, that's right here.
So.
So that's different.
That's different. That's different. And it's, it's like I said, for me, with all due respect to you guys, I don't, I think we need to restart all over again. But, okay, we've decided, and we will stay there. Like, for example, Big Green, their bid is nine thousand seven hundred. They're digging a hundred feet of trench. Whereas Greg Prose does not tell us how much he is digging. It just says reshape ditches from pole barn to nature center, however far that is.
So do we like the hundred feet of trench in front here, in the north side?
It just, I just think that they're more specific, that's all. It doesn't mean that that's, that's what they're saying, again, because they, none of these proposals, again, they, they're not specific.
But I'm just saying to add into our next bid.
We're not gonna go out to, oh, to the next one for the, when we do phase two, yes. When we, when we go to phase two, we'll ask them to give us a little bit more specific in terms of, 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 be more specific when it comes to the length.
We need to be more specific on what we're asking for.
There you go.
So that's my point.
Yes.
Do we want, what this bid says, Big Green does not include, it is over and above what we asked. I don't see anywhere on here where it says about digging a trench. So do we want that on the bid? Are we gonna entertain this?
So Big, Big Green does say trench, okay?
Yeah.
They do say trench. No, and it's on the bid, it's on the bid, it's on the bid.
It's a hundred feet of trench.
Hundred feet of trench, okay, so they are gonna do a trench, okay? So they did.
They're calling a trench, it's a ditch, same thing.
Right.
Because he got his wheel out, measured from where down here up to, up to culvert two, up to culvert, including culvert two. So he had his wheel out, his wheel measurement.
So he measured it.
Wheel measurement, how much ditching had to be done.
Again, when you look at the, when you look at the two proposals, one is very specific, and it gives a little bit more detail about what they're doing. The other one does not, it just lumps everything into one, one number, okay?
Can I take two minutes?
Sure, take as much time.
And explain, kind of, a census when we all met. We determined, kind of, in listening to these contractors, what we need. So, we identified now that there is a culvert that needs to be included. Number three.
Number three.
The flow of the water is coming down, and so this whole road has a, like a curve, where the gravel has been formed. That needs, that needs to be corrected, so most of the water is running down here into the swamp. All right? So that, that's what we assume these contractors are gonna do. The next thing is, this culvert is, has just a little collection area, and actually things are just flowing over the road.
Culvert number two?
Culvert number two, all right? So by addressing the crown of this, the pitch of this road and eliminating that berm, if you will, is gonna put more water this way.
Right, that's why we're gonna take the berm out, because the berm's keeping that.
It's just for people that weren't there, all right? And then, this one is plugged up right here. That's gotta be cleaned down.
Yeah.
That culvert.
Culvert number one?
Number one.
Yeah.
All right? And now, this whole process here, the road is just about, almost level with the front porch.
Yeah.
So they talked about a swell, could be like veing it down, so the water then gets funneled. I'm sorry, I'm not showing you in here. So that the water gets swaled around the east wall and down.
Right, that's the swell. And it also collects the water from the hill coming down this way.
Okay, and then, then with the parking lot area over here, we want that finished and capped off in here, okay?
Yeah, there's a berm out here on the old existing parking lot by the exit of the culvert. They're gonna take that berm out, and they're gonna crown the, the area out here, so the water goes in both directions.
So that's kind of the desired effect, and that's kind of what we expect in this bid, is to achieve the directional flow of the flood and where it's gonna be.
I, I understand, and I appreciate that, thank you, Commissioner.
Can I just point out, though, that Big Green does not address the parking lot? The newly created parking lot?
I just don't know.
So, so Prose, they say that they will apply the clay gravel mix to the new parking area and road to create crowd. And they will finish grade with, with crater?
So do we wanna vote on what we have here, or do we wanna go back to them? And if we do that, then we might as well go back to Bruce Lau.
Yes.
So let's make a decision.
We.
I mean, do we have enough information on Greg Prose excavating's proposal to say everything that you just said? Because I don't see in his one, two, three, four, five lines how that can encompass what you just described.
Yeah, Prose is, Prose doesn't have enough definition of what they have.
Agreed.
It's kind of general, just, oh, yeah, here, yeah, you know, you know.
Yeah, I do like how Big Green has separate, I mean, he used many of the same words that you're using. But I agree with Mary, he did not, they don't have a parking lot.
I agree, I, I will say that Greg Prose did describe what he would do here, but I agree with you, he didn't put it on the, on the paper.
Right, and, and, and Big Green specified the costs, and he broke down by the amount, which, which I, I appreciate.
Yeah.
So, there's two things with, with the, if we, that I'm concerned about this, this proposal is, again, we could ask him if he would address the parking lot, correct? Is that what we're worried about, that he's not addressing here?
Correct.
So we'd have to go back to that, even though it was on.
We're also gonna have to ask him to install number three.
Well, if, if, if it needs to be replaced according to, to, to Greg Prose, he doesn't know. And they don't mention, they don't mention.
I think everybody's concluded, Bruce Lau concluded.
That it needs to be replaced.
It needs to be replaced, I think.
He didn't say it needed to be replaced, Bruce Lau said.
Extend twenty.
It needed to be twenty feet longer.
Yeah, extend.
So that to me says.
So that's different than replace.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and that wasn't addressed in, in Big Green.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
It wasn't addressed in Big Green. Big Green is missing two parts, and, and Prose does not give us enough information.
I, I think we need to rebid this, and, and if we were going to have to rebid it, we might as well rebid the entire, entire project. I.
I, I agree.
We're going back to where we started.
I agree.
I, I, I think we need to get our ducks in a row, get the request for bid completed, send it out, and then go from there. I, I don't, I don't think we can make a.
I mean, I, I, excuse me, I don't know, but looking at that first part, do you think that the walking path that he's talking about is the parking lot?
No, it's right down here.
It's right here where the path.
It's the one path that goes up to the top of the hill.
I was thinking maybe the path to get into the building, is what I was thinking, way leading, okay.
So, I mean.
I think we need, need more definition on things.
Yes, absolutely.
I agree.
Because all close but no secure.
Right.
There's too many ifs in here.
Yep.
And some of it isn't even an if.
Right. So, okay, so, and I'm, and I'm glad, I'm glad we went through this exercise, because it helps us to understand. And we are new to this, and we will do better next time. So now I'm hearing, as your chair, that we're going to go out to. I, I rebid, but we will use the same proposal that the manager came up with, because we agree with that. But we will add the, the extending of, of, of what is, what is it called? Of culvert number three, twenty feet or as needed, correct? We're gonna add that, we're gonna add that. And we're gonna ask that it be, ask that it be done by, before the end of June. See if that can be done. And we're, and we're gonna break it up into, we're gonna try, okay? I'm gonna give it one more try. If we, if we get it, we get it, if we don't, then we won't be able to do the project, all right?
So you're, you're asking for a rebidding of the original project, not the middle project.
With more specific detail.
Yes.
But we also need to include the next phase, ask these people to bid on that during a different timeframe.
No, we, we can't, we can't do that.
It's nobody in the war.
Right, we can't do that. We, we, we've gone around in circles.
Looks like we started last time, we were only supposed to bid phase one.
Right, let's just.
Then everything got wrong, because then, well, we, well, while you're here, you might as well bid this, and come up with a bid just then.
Let's, let's, Mary, please, I know, I hope this gives you more information, so we're gonna go phase, by phases, because we think that we can, we can at least afford it. And, and then we'll do the big one later, and the next one. But I, and this is still very good, I, I know, for those of you that are watching out there, I promise you, we're not fumbling here. We're just trying to make sure that we're doing the right thing, that we need to consider. We didn't consider them, now we are. So we're gonna stick with phase, this first phase. We're gonna ask them to, to resubmit a bid, and we're gonna ask them to give us a little bit more detail. And, and we're gonna ask, I guess I said, I hate to be repetitive, but we're gonna talk about extending culvert number three. And then also making sure that they address the, the parking area, is that, the new parking area? And what, what, what would you like them to, what would you like the manager to say regarding that, that, that requirement? What should she say?
For the new parking area, twenty-three A.
Okay, so we would like for them to.
Twenty-three A road gravel.
No, I think Bruce Lau, when he came out, he stated that twenty-three A is no longer available. That's why he bought a large amount of it, and that he was going to use.
Clay mix.
I guess we'll have to find out what's available.
Okay, so we can say twenty-three A.
Or equivalent.
Or equivalent, okay? I guess it's the same as saying, whatever's available.
So are we gonna give the feet, what we're looking?
We're gonna ask them to be more specific, to tell us, not the feet, because we, again, this gentleman, under Big Green, they said it was a hundred feet, okay, they measured it like, like Joe said.
It was from the ditch, yes?
Right, I'm hoping that Prose or whoever else comes in and, and rebids this, will do the same. We'll just ask them to be more specific with regards to the, the lineage, is that, is that the proper term, gentlemen? Or the length of, of the, of the area from, unless we know and we can measure it ourselves, I suppose.
I mean, if we're asking for the bid, and, and so-and-so measures it at this, and somebody else measures it less.
That's what I'm concerned about.
I just think we need to measure it, or we need to be the ones saying, this is what we're asking for.
Ken, is it difficult to measure?
No, not really, but like I say.
Or we can just, we can just, again, specify from here to here.
Well, it's delineated out there by logs, and you can see there's square footage out there, so Danny come out with his measuring wheel, that's why he figured out how much foot of ditching he had to do. So all he's gotta do is take his measuring wheel, go around the little park, the new parking lot, go, okay, that's the total area, how many square feet of, of twenty-eight, or whatever you can put in there.
And we can ask them to be specific and to break down their costs.
If we're looking for the bids to be specific, then, or in their, the proposals to be specific, we can't just say, give us what you think, because.
No, 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 you're absolutely right.
It's our information.
Everybody thinks different, so that's what we gotta tell them, what we want.
I agree.
What we're looking for. It's kind of like going to a department store, where's menswear, and where's housewares?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go.
So can I ask the, the three of you to work on that language? To make sure that the consultants or the contractors know exactly what we're talking about? And we will, and ask them to please break it up, and I'd like for us to follow similar format like Big Green, where they, they break it down.
Yeah.
Please? And, and then, of course, the deadline is still the end of this fiscal year. Now, if, if they, if we don't get it, if we don't get it, then we don't get it. And we will have to wait till next fiscal year to do it. And then at that time, I'm not gonna go over. I'm not gonna go over and over again, but we will decide whether we're gonna do this as a whole, or we're gonna do it in phases, okay? I'm sorry, it's just that, when we started, this was, uh, we, we had some tight deadlines to do this, like I said, when we did the budget, we had such tight deadlines, and if they say, if they say to us that they can't meet this deadline, then my suggestion or recommendation to this commission is to take a look at other projects that we may, we may, we may be able to complete within this fiscal year, okay? So that we can show that we're doing stuff.
Yeah, on the map here, we can add new parking area. I put little broken lines there, that's our rough estimate of our new parking area.
Yeah.
I put that there, 'cause that's not...
That'd be perfect, that'd be perfect.
So, we don't forget it.
No. Okay, and we can ask them to, uh, send their proposals within a week.
So, also, too, add your little line right there, so, put swale in there, because that's gonna be the way they wanna grade this hill, and that hill is down that way. So, put in the swale in the parking area.
Okay, can I point out, though, so today is the twenty-eighth. If we get this letter completed by Monday, say, that's the second of June...
Yep.
You're going to give them a week to bid, which brings it to the ninth, and you want them to complete it by the thirtieth.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct. And if they don't, then they don't. This is a small project, this is a very small project, it should...
This is, this is the smallest thing to go, and that's where the small equipment comes in. You can turn a lot of the small equipment around and use it faster, you ain't gonna bring a D-eight down through here and do anything but damage.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You're gonna push so much damn...
I mean, look at, look at the bids, Mary, they're so low.
I, I'm not saying the bid, I'm saying the timeline.
I know, I know.
It's a good point, but I guess we've got...
I mean, you, you actually are...
It's fourth down, and we gotta pot.
I know, and if we get it, we get it, and if we don't, then we're gonna have to look at next fiscal year.
Plan C.
Again, this, this should've been thought of, and, you know, last fiscal year, and, and done early, in, you know, December, November, you know, for now.
We just work with what we have.
Exactly, thank you.
We're here.
We are here, and we're...
Ain't going nowhere.
Correct.
We got it.
We are working now, and we're gonna get it done, and Mary, please, you know, again, I think that this is a small project, based on the, the bids that I'm looking at here, and I think that it, that they should be, they should be able to do it, and please, again, express our concern that we, again, the, the commission, uh, received, uh, proposals that were all different, and we could not make those, we said over and over again, they, they're different. But the good thing is that we finally decided that we're gonna do it in phases, and...
I think we just started looking at this back in March, when we had Monopoly down here.
Rainstorm.
Yeah, so, it's taken a while, and we had other fish to fry, and we had budget tied coming in, and everything else, so, I'm not making excuses, but we're on different timelines for, uh, time-sensitive projects, so, next, we can't do it all at one time, there's only five of us, six.
Are we meeting tomorrow?
You're meeting tomorrow.
Okay, can I point out, too, though, that, and this is not concerning just this project, but you're concentrating on one thing, and I have a lot more things...
Yep.
That I'm working on, and so, I'm trying to do them in the order that they need to be done.
Yep.
And we keep pushing off certain things that was expressed, that you wanted to be dealt with.
Yep.
So...
Mary, you made, you, you know, you made a really good point, um, I think, and I, and I, I'm waiting for the summer, but this, this July, we need to come together as a, as a commission and develop our priorities, and, and express, and give the manager direction, and, uh, develop, uh, goals so that we know where we're heading and what we're doing.
Well, the, the, our duty to our administrators, we got a pie that's only this big, we're slicing it and pulling out minorities and giving it to her, so, when she takes that piece of pie out, something's gotta come back into the pie, the table's only so full. If something comes out that's more of a priority, something's gotta go out, so, everybody's gotta set the priorities of what's most important to us in the community to keep you ready, 'cause you've got a dozen things going on right now. We're just talking about one thing or two things, and you've got...
I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing, commissioners, please know this, because of the tight time crunch, we're gonna have to meet again on a special meeting, but I'm gonna ask that we just address, hopefully, this will be the only item on the agenda, unless something else comes up, but I'm gonna ask that we meet as quickly as we can, and, within that timeframe, we also have to set some time for, um, for meeting, so, as quickly as we can.
Well, tonight will one for two, which is a bid. These two here, oh for two, you know?
I know, I know, one for two, I would've liked to have done both, but this is a good exercise, and it's, we've learned a lot, taught us, and we've got to, um, do this better next time, and, and the other thing, believe me, I, I've done this many times, where, where I would get proposals from somebody, and if they did not meet the requirements as were requested on the, on the, on the request, the item would not be considered. We would just push that aside and say, thank you very much, but you did not address what we're asking you to do. So, we would not consider it, we would not consider that.
And so, was that part of your bid?
That, that, we mentioned that in the bid, we would say, if you do not follow, you know, our, our proposal, our request, then the commission has the right, or in this case, the city council, has the right to, uh, to not accept your bid, so we would say it, and that's also part of the policy, that I, attorney will help us with this together, that we would say, that we have the right to, uh, to, uh, to not accept a, a bid, and we could identify certain specifics, and number one, you know, it, it, it did not comply with, uh, with what we were asking for, and that's usually the big one, and we can put that in writing, and, so, again, we're learning, we're learning, and these are small projects, but, uh, but we'll get there, and, and so, please, please be, I ask you to, please, we may have to meet on a Saturday, in order to get this, uh, this, this done quickly, and meet the timeframes, or, okay, yes?
It's quarter to ten.
I know, it's a quarter to ten, all right.
It's one forty-five.
All right, let's get moving, so, okay, so now we have to make a decision on this. Do I have a motion to, uh, resubmit a bid, resubmit this bid? Uh, is that correct, with the following changes, as I've already mentioned?
Yes.
Okay, you make that motion by Hutchins, is there a support?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Wright, uh, Madam Chair, please call the row.
What's the motion?
You're the chair.
I just said the, okay.
I don't, I didn't really understand.
Okay, so the motion is to, uh, re... Request that these bids be, uh, is it resubmitted? Resubmitted with the following modifications, as I, as I stated, one was to address the, one was to address the, um...
I can read them.
The, go ahead, culvert, go ahead.
So, Phase One, resubmit a bid, number two, add more details, number three, extend twenty feet of culvert, use material twenty-three A or the equivalent, and the last that I had written down is ask to include the new parking lot.
And the swale.
Swale.
And the swale.
And when specifics, Mary, I would just ask to, you know, please break down costs, give us an accurate breakdown of costs.
That, I think will be in our proposal.
Yes.
Request for proposal.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay.
Okay, everybody agree?
Yeah.
So, the motion has already been made, and it has been, um, made by Mr. Hutchin, Commissioner Hutchins, and supported by Commissioner LaRoe.
Commissioner Carl?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSessa?
Yes.
Commissioner Earl, yes?
Okay, motion passed, thank you very much, let's, let's keep going real quick, um... Okay, so, under new business, I know we're running time, but we really need to discuss this. Uh, all I'm asking, under new business, it's to discuss the need for a credit card for Holly.
Remember, here, we missed the, uh, number three under...
Oh, I apologize, item number three, thank you, sir, uh, discuss the Holly Township beach opening and July Fourth plans, uh, Madam Manager?
So, last meeting, we discussed opening at Memorial Day, um, there were several things that didn't get done in time, uh, we did plant, um, grass seed, uh, there, but the, um, sign, uh, Miss, uh, Commissioner Carl signed through Calypso, and it has been installed now. Um, the ropes and the buoys are not out yet, um, we did walk yesterday with our, um, insurance representative, uh, and he did point out that, as far as he was concerned, things looked very good, um, but there are a couple of things that we still need to address before we open, I think. Um, one of the things is, is we had a large cleanup day with ASP, and we got a lot of things done, but there's still a lot of things that need to be addressed, including, um, changing out some of the boards in the picnic tables, there are, um, some of the fire, uh, barbecue, uh, kind of things...
Pits, Miss...
That are, um, rotted through, basically, uh, so, I think we need to address whether they're actually safe, all of them, and if they're not, uh, how we take care of that...
Replace.
Before we invite the public to use them, um, we have talked about concessions that probably doesn't need to be fully in place just to open, but I think that, you know, we still could work on that. Staffing-wise, we have, uh, most of our, uh, staff returning, um, but we do have a little bit of a challenge right now due to health issues with a couple of our Michigan Works people, so, um, I mean, I hate to replace them, uh, with new staff without knowing, um, and, and that includes the people who are returning, um, to, to really understand how many hours they wanna work, and how many days, because I don't wanna hire somebody and then find out that, you know, our current staff would've worked more if that's what we wanted, so, I think we need to still ti, uh, figure that out. At the last meeting, it was discussed that there was gonna be certain criteria that would be whether the beach stayed open or not, so, you know, number one, I think it's obvious to everybody, if it's actually raining or expected to rain most of the day, we would be closed, um, but there was a sixty-five degrees, we would not be open, if we're gonna keep that, you know? Um, so, if there's any other things, I, I would like to have that in place when we're actually starting, so that our staff is clearly aware that this is what, you know, is expected. I guess as far as July Fourth, we already have two staff people who have volunteered to work that day, but my understanding, I was not at July Fourth last year, um, my understanding was is that they had significant staff throughout the day, including up to eleven o'clock, um, so that was gonna be a lot of people, um, but there were commissioners, as my understanding, who were also in attendance that day, um, so, um, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to plan it, but I'm not going to be at the July Fourth one, because I'm going to be away on vacation, so, I don't know if other commissioners are going to plan on being there, um, but I thi, I think it's fair to say that we need at least three staff people there from morning until night, and...
Till eleven PM?
That's when, that's when the fireworks will be over.
Oh.
They start at ten.
On the third of July, on the third of July is fireworks, not the fourth.
So, the third is Thursday.
Yep, because the village, we are, we, they're the ones hosting the fireworks. The village is not big enough...
That's right.
To get the premium fireworks on the fourth, so we had to settle for the third.
That's true, I forgot about that, yes.
Again, we've done it before, as far as staffing goes...
So, wait a second, is that gonna change things for the fourth? Because if the fireworks are on the third, we're not going to need staff past eight o'clock, is that correct? And the fourth?
The fourth is gonna be on the third.
Yes, and they call, they called it, we're calling it something else.
The fourth of July is now the third of July.
And they're calling it something else. Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's gonna be the same, it's just gonna be, uh, third, not fourth, and then they're not calling it July Fourth, they're calling it something else.
I don't know, I don't...
I forget the name.
It's gonna be the third of July.
Okay, so where...
As far as staffing goes, it takes about, just from previous times of being out there, we had up to eight people on, on staffing, because you have to patrol the parking lot. Everybody parks in our lot, where no matter where they're going, and it gets to be, we have to close off our parking lot, because it becomes a hazard, people start driving through, people are walking in, there's more foot traffic on the Fourth of July than there is car traffic, and it takes about a half an hour for the beat, well, the crowds to go up Thomas Street to get out of there, they go out all the other roads, but we have to patrol our parking lot, because we get some jerks in there, double parking, they don't care, they're rude, so we had three to four people just closing off with tape lights, the parking lot, before, I'm sorry, go find some other place, go on the other side of the cemetery, there's parking there, there's plenty of parking around the neighborhoods, it's all restricted parking, and then you have crowd control on the beach, and that gets to be a little bit, uh, sketchy. Not everybody is really polite, you know?
Are they planning to shut down Park Avenue like they did last year?
You mean by shut it down?
No parking. Uh, Elm Street was, you couldn't, you couldn't even get close to the park.
Well, the police do that, they, all the cars, you come in, it's, Thomas Street becomes one way, you can only go out Thomas Street and Rosetta to Saginaw, you can only go out Park Avenue or Elm to get to Maple or Saginaw Street, so, there's only three outlets to Saginaw Street, and that's Elm and, or for Maple Way Parking, so, everybody isn't trying to turn around and get confused when they come in, and all through our neighborhood, it's all restricted parking, one direction only, so everybody can get the heck out of there.
Yeah, I think they... Okay, can, it is ten o'clock, um, was there something specific that you wanted to bring up about July third?
Third?
Yeah.
Well, one thing about parking, last year, the village was collecting the ten-dollar parking fee in, in their village lot, and we had no coordination, you could park at the beach for free.
Yep.
And you're literally hundred yards apart, I mean, so we need to coordinate that activity.
Okay, so, why don't we do this, again, because of the, the time, let's, uh, I, I am working, believe it or not, I'm part of the July Fourth thing, and we're meeting, we're gonna be meeting very, very soon, we've been talking about this for weeks now, and, uh, I'll be, I'll be meeting with them, and I'll know, I'll have answers to some of your questions.
With the manager and the police chief?
Yes, yes.
And my only other thing was last, uh, constructed about House, and they courted, and Mary confirmed with me yesterday that was covered.
That was gonna, it's gonna be on the June agenda.
I had no knowledge of that, but having some activities on our behalf at the beach is, I think, favorable.
Okay.
If it's the bounce house and...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, so let's, uh, do I have a consensus that maybe a group of us can meet with, uh, with, uh, with our manager and come up with some plans, and then, uh, I think that's gonna be the quickest way, and then we'll go, and then we'll go for that, the commission will accept whatever we come up with, is that okay? Now, I'm not so sure about charging people for parking, you know, I, 'cause we've never done that before, I know...
I think it's gotta be done, if the village is doing it, we have to.
Well...
Why should we let them park free when they, when they're just next door, they're charging?
I, and I, and I realize that, but we've not, we've never done this before.
Why should that be a deterrent, I mean... I mean, it's all in the vicinity, the people are coming to watch fireworks. If they're charging.
Well, we have to be charging for a reason. If we're going to charge to do, what is this money for?
Donation for next year.
Well, we can't do that. Yes, the only thing we can...
I'm sorry?
We, as a government entity, we cannot donate to another government entity without interoperability.
How does the village qualify with that?
Because they're doing on their property, and it's their event, so they can do that. This is not our event, and we're, if we were to charge for, let's say, parking, then the thing that I would say, it would be the cost to help recover our operating costs. That's what I would say it would be used for. But because we haven't really, we don't really have the time to take a look at this, I respectfully ask that maybe this year, you know, we will let this committee, let this group of people meet with the manager, come up with some plans, and then take a look at that. And maybe this first year will continue, but then the next year, we may be a little bit different.
But we do still have a month, right?
Mm-hmm.
Before July comes up.
Yes, right.
Seems like that would be long enough to...
And maybe even when we come back to approve the project, we may come up with a solution to that, too. I, the thing with money is, again, it's dangerous, believe it or not. I'm not saying the Holly could be dangerous, but if you're accepting cash, then you're liable for that cash, and if you lose it, or if you, if it gets stolen, things happen, and so, we have to set the proper procedure in order to be able to do this, and we have to make sure that it's counted correctly. Not that we don't trust anybody, but still, I would prefer a staff member or someone like that to do that for us, because it's happened with me in other communities that I've worked with where we don't collect the funds properly, and then it's a big guess. Yeah.
The village has only charged for parking the last couple of years. What does it cost you to park downtown anywhere on the public street or any street in the village? What does it cost you?
Zero.
It's public property. Our parking lot is public property, and what they're doing is they're charging parking on public property.
Yes.
I don't along with that.
I understand, understand, understand. Time, 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 time. Let's discuss this for another time, but again, with the village, they're trying to make monies so that they can pay for the...
We have a donation bucket we put on.
We could, you know, okay. So, let's, this committee, this group of people, do I hear volunteers? I'll volunteer to work with the manager. Can I have somebody else to volunteer? Okay.
I will.
Would you want to work? Okay, so, that's three of us to work with you, Mary.
Right.
Okay, and we will meet quickly and come up with a solution. But I don't really want to charge. It takes a lot to be able to get this money, and unless there's a good reason, then we should do it. Otherwise, I agree with Commissioner Hutchins, it's public property. The only reason I would say that the village would do it is to help them raise and pay for the fireworks.
Well, the biggest thing is to, my comment is, when we used to charge for beach tags to get in the beach, those years, 4th of July was free, so we didn't charge anybody to come into our gates.
Okay.
So, it was free, and like you're saying, how do you charge for a public parking lot?
Okay, so, again, let's, it's a good question, but let's let this committee meet and come up with some solutions, and we'll do that. And then on the beach opening, the manager came up with some good things that need to be addressed. I think, again, come back to us, Mary, and we will be able to address it. I think we may have to replace the pits, the grill pits. That might be something that we have to do. Again, given the time, it may be hard to find them right now, so the best thing we could do right now would be just simply to remove them, which is hard unless we can have somebody in our staff to clean them and make them workable, and then we can use them. All right, because I've been there, too.
Well, I know that Commissioner Hutchins at one point said that it might be possible to get sheet metal or something to put at the bottom of them. That seems to be the biggest problem. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's from leaving ashes in there, eats up the steel. And we're talking plate steel, not plate, not sheet metal. Well, I can get some sheet metal sheared, we can bolt that together, so those stones are expensive. I think they're about $500, $600 a piece.
Oh, yeah, they are. The grills, yeah, they're very expensive.
So, for maybe like 60 bucks a piece, you can repair those.
Okay, but again, it's going to take the staff, so we'll look at that. Okay, we will look at that. All right, so, we'll come back and make some decisions. Moving on real quickly to new business, we got to discuss a credit card. We need a credit card because in today's world, that is what is acceptable for doing business. It is very difficult to write a check or to give cash, especially when you're buying an item for the township parks. I will tell you that it is not, does not look good to use someone's personal credit card when you're buying a piece of equipment for the township.
The other concern is, is because in the last month, we have ordered a lot of things over the Internet and had to use personal cards, and I think that that is just something that we should not be doing.
Correct.
For the park.
Correct, correct. And we're using somebody else's credit, and there's all kinds of things that can go wrong. So, with all due respect, I would like to ask just permission, and we're going to come back to you on this, that's why I'm not asking you to vote on this, but just give us permission. I will go with the, with our manager to our bank and ask for an application to come, to get a credit card. Now that I spoke with the township, the township treasurer, and we don't need permission from them to be able to get a credit card, they do recommend that we go to our bank to get it. Again, we could set up some restrictions on their use and who will have access to it. We can do that. Yes, sir?
This is not new. I mean, this is, two years ago, we discussed credit card. So, do you, there was an issue, though, that we couldn't do it, and I, for life of me, I'd have to go back to the minutes.
The problem we had wasn't getting issued a new one. The problem we had was getting the old one taken out of somebody else's name.
That won't be very difficult, sir, and I can assure you that this...
That's what took us two months or three months to get our...
I just knew there was an issue and it hasn't been addressed.
Things, times have changed, okay, because we've done this before. We can work with the bank, they will give us some specifications, we will tell them, you know, who's going to be, who's going to have access to this, they will explain it to us, and then we are in control of this card, so we can stop the use of this car, of this card. We can place one of us, preferably the chair and the vice chair, and say, we want to put a stop hole on this card, this individual no longer works for us, cannot use it. We ask for a replacement card. So, we can do that, and that'll be quick. It won't take long. I've done this in other communities, so please don't worry about that. The thing that I thought you were going to tell me, because I had to do this, is that whoever we give the credit card to, they will need to give us their social security number and their name, and the bank will have to, will have access to that information. I had to do that in all the communities I worked for. Again, it's, that's a thing. They need to know the person, and they need to be able to get to you in the event there's an issue, and that's what they do. Okay? So, manager, that's something that I will ask you to please comply with as we get through that. Who knows, maybe they might have a different way now. So, commissioners, if it's okay with you all, I will go with the, with our manager, speak to our bank, and see how we can tighten this up a little bit better. Very, very soon, as soon as I get to managers, we'll come back to a regular meeting, and we'll explain what we're doing, and we will ask for your approval at that time. Okay? Okay. Item number eight, public comment. There is no public comment, so we're going to go, we're not going to address that item.
There's no public for public comment.
I'm sorry. There's no public for public comment. Thank you, sir. And then, item number nine, I asked for reports from staff. Again, given the time, I don't know if you want to say something, Mary. Again, it's so late, and then I would ask the managers, the reason I wanted to put this in here, and if I can, with all due respect, ask that I speak first. I simply wanted to thank our manager for her hard work and her good work that she did at the township recently. The vice chair and I were there as her backup when she gave the report to the township for our budget. I don't think I've ever received a standing ovation for the presentation, so she did excellent when it came to the presentation. They did ask us a couple of questions, but none that were very difficult, and we answered them quickly. We do need to go back to them and give them this report. I'll be meeting with the manager and the accountant to make sure that we put the budget together. They did not ask for anything that was not doable and that we can do quickly so that we can prepare the final report, and we submitted to the township for consideration. I think that they will approve our budget. They liked it, they really had no qualms. If anything, there were questions regarding form and some format, and they asked us a couple of questions as it related to the concessions, how were we going to work that? They were glad that we were going to do that, however, they wanted to know how that was going to work. And the other thing, I believe, was promotions. Again, we have to work on our line items a little bit more to explain, and so, again, I explained where those monies were at, and you can't identify it right away, but I did identify and showed them exactly where those monies were budgeted, and that, I think, is the crux of...
And I think we'll have to meet with our bookkeeper.
Yes.
And clarify some things on that.
Yes, yes. The thing that they asked, it was in accordance with the Budget Act, and the State Budget Act requires us to provide certain information. One is, they ask us to provide the, and I'm looking at the columns in my head right now, is the actual for what happened last fiscal year, how much money did you actually spend? They want that. I know that's already available. And then the other column was, they want us to provide with them estimates in terms of how much do we think we're going to spend at the end of the year, and so, this way, we'll be able to do that. And there's not that many line items, we should be able to do that very, very quickly, and that goes both with our revenue and our expenditures. The only thing is, they have to match, okay? And we have to stay within the budget, so this is good that we're doing here, and I think based on today's proposals, I think we're going to be way, way below budget, so I think we'll be fine, we'll be fine. The only other thing that I wanted to state is, I really want to meet with our auditor. I apologize, I wasn't able to meet with you at that meeting, but I do have some questions for the auditor that I have some concerns about, and I'll come back and give you a report if you guys don't mind. I would appreciate it. It's just my financial background that I have, and I like to make sure that we utilize it here. And, of course, the last thing that I want to say, and this is so important to each of you, please, 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 there is a separation between our manager, operations, and us as legislators and policymakers. We are the legislation, she is responsible for the operations. As a matter of fact, when I was talking with her at that meeting, we discussed who should give the presentation. As your chair for the commission and as your budget, I quickly thought it should be my responsibility to give the presentation. And the more and more I thought of it, I kept hearing Commissioner Hutchins' voice in my head, keep them separate and make sure you understand your role. She is in charge of operations, and we're in charge of policy, or legislation. It does not mean that we can't ask questions, it does not mean that we can't direct us, but when we direct her, we do it as a whole. We don't do it as individually, just so you know, okay? And the other thing that I'd like to say is, anything you do, whether it's the purchasing of a computer, a piece of equipment, a sign, it must go through her. It must, and she must be the one to approve it. When I did the computer stuff, I, we made sure that we highlighted everything that the commission had approved, and we made sure that we showed her the resolution, or the, not resolution, but the approval, the motion that was made, and the date, and all that sort of stuff, so that we could do it. Now, once we get a credit card, she's not going to need us, she can do this. However, there will be reports that come to us so that we can monitor closely and see what she does, but I ask you commissioners to please understand our roles, know that she's in charge, and let's not confuse them, because that gets us into all kinds of trouble. And I don't think, it's not happening now, at least I'm hoping it's not, to the best of my ability. If it is, we'll have a discussion between us, but as her boss, we speak to her as one, not as individuals. We can ask questions, we can, you know, whatever, but when we deal with the big projects, let's do, let's do, let's, you know, we'll do it as a whole and not as individuals. So, there's no one person here that's responsible.
We will have to, and not at 10 after 10.
I know.
More clarification on how that actually works.
We will, and that's, again, that's part of our goal statement, and please, don't let my statement discourage you from talking to her. She is one of the most open, willing to listen at any time of the day type of individual, and I respect that, but there are times when I'm texting her, whatever, you don't have to answer this, you can do it in the morning, you know, or I'll say something like that. And the same thing with Commissioner, I'll do that. All I ask is, please, 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 we need to work together as a team, not as individuals. We are all responsible for the beach, we're all responsible for Soreston Park, we're all responsible for this budget and our staff, but it is as a whole, as a team, and I think once we understand our roles clearly, that will truly help. So, please, 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 if you have a question or a doubt, the vice chair and I would be happy to help with those questions, because I want him to, because he's my backup, to make sure that he knows where I'm going, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we support the manager, and if she has a question or whatever, she can come speak to us, or even you all. If there's an issue, please bring it up, and we'll discuss it. It's not to discourage any kind of communication with her, it's just that we got to remember, this is our Parks and Recreation Commission, and what we do, we do this as a whole, not as individuals, okay? Thank you. And congratulations, Mary, you did an excellent job on the presentation, and I've never heard of anybody give a standing ovation on my presentation, but...
There was a standing ovation, I missed it.
Well, you did, because you were facing the other way, but I saw it, and there were quite a few people that stood up and clapped for you.
Really?
Yes, after you gave your presentation, so, congratulations, and thank you for your hard work. You did really well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other quick reports, otherwise we're going to move on.
My only comment and my only report would be the same thing I say every day. Thank you very much, Mary, you are appreciated.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Give Commissioner Hutchins anything? Nope.
Her and I got some work to do.
Lots, the three of y'all, everybody.
Thank you.
It's too late to be...
Yep, to be told. We'll do again.
Time to leave.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Thank you. Our meeting is adjourned at exactly 10:17 PM. Thank you.